I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Maell.
Here.
Councilmember Koreshi.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Welcome back, everyone. This is our first meeting since our August recess. And tonight, we start off with a public hearing on priority needs and proposed projects for the Community Development Block Grant Program. Just to give us a little, do you want to give a little background, Ms. Siemens?
I can't.
Okay.
The Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, was introduced in 1974. We've certainly been using it for many years. We administer our own CDBG program. By Resolution 201616, the city council adopted new funding priorities for the program. It limits the allocations to capital projects benefiting low and moderate income populations. The primary beneficiaries of these projects receiving the CDBG funds must be persons or households of low and moderate incomes, as defined by HUD. In Montgomery County, a household of four with an annual income of $70,150 or less qualifies for services funded by the CDBG program. To maximize resources available for programming which directly benefit Tacoma Park's low and moderate income residents, we emphasize the following core activities: advance economic development efforts, create environmentally sustainable communities, and maintain a livable community for all. We have approximately $91,000 to distribute among projects.
So I think we have one person who signed up to speak at the public hearing, Mr. Jose Mangandi? No? No? Oh, sorry, there you are, I'm sorry. You wanted to speak to something else?
I just had a final.
Oh, alright, well, then you don't have to speak. So is now, is there, is there anyone who would like to speak on this, at the public hearing this evening? No?
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Wallace, resident of Tacoma Park on Holly Avenue. I don't know if this would be considered under this program, but I'd like to bring it to your attention. Regarding affordable housing, a lot of times, you know, affordable housing is being able to stay in your own home. And for me, that meant starting an Airbnb and renting out rooms in my house. Doing that, and doing it well, requires a bit of an investment in your home. So it means cleaning stuff out, taking all your kids' stuff out of there, painting the walls, maybe getting a new mattress and things like that. And so I know there's a lot of other people that might be, and there are a lot of other people in Tacoma Park already doing Airbnb, but it really helps me pay my taxes, pay my utilities, and brings a lot more business to the community and to the restaurants here in Tacoma Park. So maybe you would consider capital improvement grants to homeowners who wanted to change at least one room in their house to be something that they could rent out via Airbnb. And I'm registered under owner-occupied group homes, so you might want to limit it just to owner-occupied group homes. And also regarding hotel taxes, Montgomery County is collecting hotel taxes from Airbnbs in Montgomery County. Montgomery County Airbnbs hosted over 14,000 people last year alone. And they're collecting 7% on anybody who stays in a home less than 30 days. However, most of my people stay 30 days or 90 days. But that could mean, as long as Montgomery County gives it to you, it could be a percentage of taxes for Tacoma Park as well. So if they could turn the hotel taxes over to, your percentage, over to the ones that are earned by Tacoma Park Airbnbs, it might be another income revenue for the city, and therefore you'd then get back money that you invested in that change, in that home. So anyway, just a suggestion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak at this moment? No? Okay, then I'm going to go through, there are no changes to our agenda this evening. Just want to highlight a couple of things coming up. Next week, our agenda for Monday evening, we actually have a special work session. So this is actually Monday, September 12th, we have scheduled a special work session to talk about the proposed election date change. It will be here in the auditorium, starting at 7:30. We'll be talking, we'll have the Tacoma Board of Elections do a presentation, have an opportunity for public comments and questions, and council discussion and direction on next steps. So that will be this Monday evening, September 12th, at 7:30. Then on our regular night, on Wednesday, September 14th, the city council will begin its meeting at 6:00 PM in an administrative function session to go over the city manager's yearly evaluation. The public meeting will then start at 7:30. Our voting session that night is a single reading ordinance authorizing additional expenditures for the development of the Flower Avenue-Green Street design. And we have two work sessions. One is a discussion of a request to name the city-owned wooded parcel by the Washington-McLaughlin property. And the other work session is a discussion of results from the September 12th work session, the Monday night work session we're having on changing the date of city elections. Then on Thursday, September 15th, in the evening, Tacoma Park is hosting the Montgomery Chapter of the Maryland Municipal League here, so that will be on Thursday night, September 15th, at 6:30. And then our regular meeting, again, Wednesday, September 21st. Again, we're tentatively scheduled to go into an administrative function session to discuss the city manager's evaluation at 6:00 PM. Our normal meeting, our public meeting, will begin at 7:30. We have a tentatively scheduled vote on a resolution to proceed with changing the date of the city elections, as well as a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of a desk and rolling panel system for the auditorium. Three work sessions are scheduled for September 21st. One is an update from the Emergency Preparedness Manager and the Emergency Preparedness Committee, an update on the streetlight purchase research and results of the pavement condition study. And then on Sunday, September 25th, we have Unity in the Community, a Neighborhood Block Party, that will be at Capital City Cheesecake from 4:00 to 7:00 PM, and we'll be hearing more about that this evening. And then on Wednesday, September 28th, our regular council meeting will again be here at 7:30. Voting session, we will have a consent agenda with a single reading ordinance authorizing the purchase of surveillance equipment, and resolutions providing for the appointments of committees. And our work session, the evening of September 28th, will be a discussion of the Safe Roadways Committee recommendation to allow bicyclists to ride on sidewalks. And so that will take us through September. Tonight, we have two voting items. The first is a resolution supporting the Unity in the Community Initiative, and the second is a consent agenda. First, if there is any public comments on the Unity in the Community Initiative. Ms. Murphy, would you like, and Ms. Murphy asked if she could have additional time this evening?
My name is Megan Murphy, and I live at 7055 Eastern Avenue. I stand in front of you tonight as a community member, a sixth-year Tacoma Park business owner, a board member of the Main Street Tacoma. I stand here today, most importantly, as a mother of three young men. Two of my three sons are with me tonight, Marcus Murphy, who attends Blair High School, and Christian Robinson, who attends Damaa, along with my husband Troy Robinson, and my sister, and one of my staff members. I asked Mayor Stewart, after serving her some delicious coffee, what Tacoma Park was doing to address the tensions sweeping the nation between law enforcement and community members. I wanted to know if there were programs or resources available for community members, such as myself, to help us process what we are experiencing nationwide, and more importantly, in our own backyards. Tensions between police officers and committee members is not a new topic. However, social media being used as a tool to receive news stories is becoming more popular and is changing perceptions of how community members view police officers and vice versa. Everybody has different reactions to videos posted on social media sites like Facebook and Instagram. Some people have the option to unlike their friends, who post videos and images around police officers. Some people repost videos to generate more awareness. Some people use videos as topics at dinner conversations or with colleagues, and some people don't use social media at all. Whether adults decide to engage or participate in social media, the youth are a direct target for applications such as Facebook, Instagram, or Snapchat. My children have witnessed unexplainable altercations between police officers and community members that leave them feeling frustrated, sad, helpless, and fearful of police officers. They have witnessed unarmed individuals across the country, some their own age, lose their life. Some households do not feel the need to discuss the videos with their children, but in our home, it's not an option. My husband and I spend a lot of energy in helping our children process what they have witnessed nationwide, and what to do if they find themselves in a situation where an officer has approached them and asked them to identify themselves. The color of their skin makes them a direct target for misperceptions of their actions and puts them in a vulnerable place to be subject to misuse of force. My one son, Chris, has decided not to jog at Psycho Creek out of fear of being misidentified and having to explain to an officer that he was exercising, not running away from a potential crime. I have spent the last few years struggling with how to process the reality that my children or my husband could be misidentified. At times, I felt hopeless, but I always remind myself that I have a voice, and I can use my voice to create change in my community. This takes me back to when I approached Mayor Stewart. I expressed to her the need for Tacoma Park to acknowledge what's happening across the nation, and to take a proactive approach to bring a headline from ever surfacing in our community. Unity in the Community Initiative was created as a plan of action to build upon the continuation of community responses throughout the nation to unite local police departments with their community into one collective voice. The initiative is a proactive step Tacoma Park is taking to create and strengthen relationships between the Tacoma Park Police Department, elected city officials, and community residents by expanding routine opportunities for people of diverse backgrounds to come together through community dialogue, relationship-building events, and sustained partnerships. People have approached me over the last few weeks and expressed they think my initiative is great, but then they follow up with questions such as, "What do you want from this initiative? What's my purpose, or what's my end goal?" I want to note that the community I live in, the community I call home, the community I'm raising my children in, the community I opened up my business six years ago, the community my children go to school in, is not waiting for a headline to surface, to respond to a national outcry that change must occur of how law enforcement and civilians interact. I want to know that my city council and my local police department acknowledge that there is tension between law enforcement and civilians, and that this is not an issue that one particular group is facing, but that this is an issue that the community as a whole is dealing with locally and nationally. I have spent more than 20 to 30 hours a week on this initiative since I have met with Mayor Stewart and Captain Collington at the end of July. I have personally responded to each and every email I receive from community members in regards to focusing our efforts on unifying Tacoma Park Police Department and the community residents. I have personally, along with Mayor Stewart and Captain Collington, met with Principal Johnson at Blair High School and Principal Savoy at Don Bosco High School, to ask them face-to-face what we can do to strengthen the relationships between our youth and Tacoma Park Police Department. I have spent hours listening to community members pour out their hearts to me about how they felt hopeless and figuring out how we can move forward together versus dividing further. This is not about choosing sides. This is about coming together and deciding what type of policing we believe in as a community. In order to do so, we need to host community dialogues to give voice to Tacoma Park residents, clergy, civil rights groups, activists, businesses, educators, coaches, students, local media outlets, and community leaders who have trust or distrust in the community. Do I have all the answers? No. Can I alone, by myself, heal men and strengthen relationships between law enforcement and civilians? No. And do I have all the resources necessary to make the initiative an ongoing success? No. I am fully aware that I, by myself, do not have all the necessary components to make this initiative a success. At the same time, I'm aware that I live in a community of about 17,000 people. I'm aware that I do not stand alone in my decision to step forward and publicly acknowledge the need to continuously work on strengthening our relationships with Tacoma Park Police, city elected officials, and community residents, and I am aware that I have a city council that strives to be helpful and accessible to residents from all walks of life. I ask you tonight to join me, Mayor Stewart, and Captain Collington in our efforts to identify and create ongoing opportunities for the Tacoma Park Police Department, city elected officials, and community residents to strengthen our relationship and make sure that every community member feels their civil liberties and public safety are protected. Thank you again for giving me the opportunity to address the city council tonight, and I look forward to your support and participation in unity in the community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anyone else like to speak to the resolution tonight on unity in the community? I think Ms. Murphy said a lot, and said it very well, so thank you so much, and thank you for all your hard work on this. All right, if there are no other comments on that voting item, then we'll turn to our second voting item, which is a consent agenda for appointment to the facade advisory committee, appointments to the Arts and Humanity Commission, and appoints to the Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs. Are there any comments on the consent agenda this evening? No? Then we will turn to public comments. So if anyone has any other comments this evening? Mr. Lovelace?
Yes. My name is Pat Lovelace, your official peace delegate, and I wanted to tell you people that I'm welcoming the city council back from their recess. It was a long six weeks. I was looking forward to my meeting. I'm glad to see you back here. Another thing I'd like to do is ask the city council, when are we going to do something about getting the Tacoma Park Folk Festival in order? It's an emergency. Everybody is telling me that is what Tacoma Park stood for. You walked in that festival and you could see it was almost saying, "We are Tacoma." And we should try to get that Tacoma Park Folk Festival going as quickly as possible. It should be at the top of the agenda. Another thing I'd like to see you people do is ask the schoolteachers and the students and welcome them to come to the community meeting sometime, or to come to the city council meeting and address what are they doing about bullying in the classrooms and bullying online. Some kids really, you know, are very sensitive and they can't take it, and it may lead to suicides, which reportedly, and it already has in many places. And I'd like to ask you, the teen depression is very, very on the rise, and we got to do what we can to combat it peacefully. We got to, we got to have in our classrooms, on the school curriculum, lessons on how to avoid becoming a bully, avoiding bullying, and what to do about it. So please, can we possibly get something like, can we possibly get something like that set up in our agenda? We need to hear from the students, as well as the, as the community teachers from grade K through 12 and onward through college. We need to know what we can do about bullying and what is being done now to stop it, because that may mean a human life is on the line. You don't need a gun to kill somebody, remember that. You can kill them with their own emotions, and it's a real tragic way when that happens. Thank you for letting me share. Please, do what we can to get Tacoma Park Folk Festival running, because I love it. I love it. I love it.
Thank you, Mr. Lovelace, and thank you for the reminder. I forgot to mention that this Sunday, September 11th, we have Folk in the Street from 10:00 AM to 5:00 PM at the Tacoma Park Gazette, and an evening program in the community center here from 5:00 to 10:00 PM. And they are looking for volunteers for the Folk Festival, because next year is the 40th anniversary. So they're, please attend this weekend, you'll have a chance to sign up to help out with the 40th anniversary. Any other public comments?
Good evening, members of the council. Good evening, staff members for the city. My name is Mark Greiner. I am pastor of the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church. I wanted to share two thank yous, first on behalf of the church, and second on behalf of myself. The church and this council have a long and very fruitful relationship, and I wanted to thank you for that and hope that it continues for a very long time. Personally, I wanted to say thanks. I've been a resident here for 10 years and served the congregation for 10 years. Tacoma Park is a terrific place to learn how to do politics. Genuinely, it's been, it's been hugely important to me, so I wanted to say thank you personally. September 30th marks the conclusion of my 10 years of ministry at Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church. I will continue being a resident of Tacoma Park, but I will no longer be pastor of the Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church. I'm enrolling at the Maryland University of Integrative Health in their Integrative Medicine and Acupuncture Program, and I'm moving in the direction of medical missions. So would be glad to speak with any of you in the next several weeks before I depart the church and in the years to come, as I continue to be a resident, but wanted to let you know publicly, and again, share a word of thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for all your service to the community. Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Elizabeth Wallace. I wasn't planned to speak about this, but a few years ago, I volunteered for the Folk Festival, actually, I volunteered several times. At one time, I volunteered to help with the children's stage. And when I looked, I actually don't listen to folk music. And so when I looked up what folk meant in Webster's, it meant from, of the people. And I felt that, actually, Folk Festival here wasn't representative of the demographics of our community at all. And so what I proposed at that festival was a group called Future Shock, which was a hip-hop group. And they came, and there were so many kids, they had to actually perform on the tennis court because the stages were so small. So the performers were young children. My son was one of them. And I had to leave the festival to go prepare some pizza for them after the performance, and I could hear the screams of enjoyment all the way to my house when they performed. So I would like to, if you want to go ahead with more music festivals, perhaps we should take a look at a different, something that would draw everybody to the community. Thank you.
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue. Hoping that you're well rested from the recess, I'll bring up a $10 million matter. Because of accounting standard changes, this year's, the city's roughly $10 million unfunded pension liability was yanked out of financial footnotes and became part of the city's bottom line. During approval of this year's budget, the city manager noted a charter-mandated cap on debt of about $20 million. So a first question, under current law and policy, does the unfunded liability count toward the debt cap? And a second question, whatever the situation is now, does the council want the liability to count toward the cap? This is not an academic matter. If the liability counts, that $10 million, plus several million dollars for the Flower Avenue and Ethan Allen New Gateway projects, plus $7 or $8 million for library renovation, will put us either over the cap, which would be illegal, or near the cap, which would be legal but not necessarily prudent. By now, you know I'm a fiscal conservative. I'd like to see the liability counted. It represents a future expense we know we'll have. If it looks like a debt and quacks like a debt, I hope we'll treat it like a debt. Whether or not you agree with that position, I hope you'll find out whether the liability now counts toward the cap, let folks know what you find out, and consider whether the current situation is what you want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Lisa Bodett, Sycamore Avenue, Ward 3. Just this past weekend, I became aware of a situation on Eastern Avenue between Second and Walnut, where there's apparently a plan to put a sewer line in behind the houses, behind the houses on Eastern, which would require approximately 50 mature trees to be cut down. Apparently, there are other options, and I am just, you know, in terms of putting the sewer line in the front underneath the street. And I'm just here to voice my opinion that I think that we should be protecting 50 mature trees on that block, and I'm hoping that the city will advocate for the trees in their dealings with WSSC. Thanks.
Any other public comments this evening? Then we will turn now to council comments. It's been a month, really? Nobody? Councilmember Koreshi?
Thanks, Mayor. I first, as a new council member, want to thank the mayor for the month-long break. It was very nice. But I will say, you know, being out doesn't mean that we weren't working and responding to emails, but it's good to see the Arthur David Olsons and Pat Lovelaces of the community because I miss that level of engagement. I just wanted to raise three very quick points. One, I've raised this with the chief and his police officers. I recently had a meeting with some community members on Eastern Avenue in regards to some recent burglaries there, and this is Eastern Avenue, not Little Eastern like Ms. Bodett just referenced. And in Ward 3 specifically, we've heard about a number of burglaries on Sycamore, and Elm, and some other streets. But I just wanted to thank the chief and his police officers and his, and his team to making themselves available, and we're supposed to have a meeting soon, now that we're back from break, in regards to addressing those legitimate concerns that community members have, because I think every individual's safe place in their life is their own home, and we perceive burglaries to be victimless crimes, especially because a lot of people aren't home when these burglaries occur, but the first place we go to when we look for a safe place is our home, and I think it's impacted many Ward 3 residents, and I appreciate the chief for making himself and some of his staff members and detectives available in regards to that. In responding to Ms. Bodett in terms of the sewer line issue, I hope you understand that myself, and particularly following the leadership of the mayor who was here before I joined the council in November, we have been actively engaging the community on Little Eastern, and Westmoreland for that matter, thanks to the efforts of Bill Brown and some of his fellow neighbors on Westmoreland to, for lack of a better term, keeping the folks at WSSC a task, reminding them of our tree ordinance and the importance of the tree canopy in Tacoma Park to our residents, but also weighing that with the very important public health concern of a very aging sewer pipeline and its potential negative impact on a community in the event that that pipeline, which is very old, I think Mayor can correct me if I'm wrong, over 100 years old, if it were to burst and cause all kinds of problems. So we are weighing those issues and we're actively engaging those issues to address both the concerns of community members and also the overarching public health concern. And I guess the final thing I wanted to raise with the city manager is, without giving names, I think I've, you're aware, in the last at least 48 hours, I've raised a concern of a community member who's had issues with, as a homeowner or condominium owner, with another condominium association within the community. We have, at least in Ward 3, it's less common, but I think we in the community have not only independent homeowners or renters, but we have condo associations and people who are part of condo associations and owners, and sort of issues and concerns that they have, which are unique to the nature of their homeownership. This experience has sort of made me realize that from a homeowner or just a person who lives in their home and rents their home or owns their home, we deal with a diverse array of, community members with a diverse array of sort of problems and issues. And this particular issue, without getting into details, I think raises for me personally the need for some kind of, and I'm not trying to create more work for your already overworked staff, but sort of digest but sort of digest your understanding of what our limitations are as a city staff and a city, of what we can do on behalf of independent citizens in our community versus when, you know, because at the end of the day, I think community members realize this, and maybe sometimes they don't, a community member may approach us about a particular issue, and that issue confronts and is against another community member. So, we're often confronted with competing views on various issues, and how we can adequately address providing resources outside of the city or within the city to our community members such that they can address their homeownership issues, so that they can address concerns they have with a city condominium association, so they can address issues. I mean, I think many people in the community are very content with, as a renter in this city, how you can approach your landlord and being empowered to address your concern as a tenant. But I think that there is, in my discussions with this particular individual and others within her building, there's less of confidence within our infrastructure, resources here, of how you address concerns that you have as a homeowner with a condominium association. So, to the extent that you can let me know about resources that I can dispatch, because as a result of this particular incident, I now have received a number of communications from that very building on Lee, and I think it would be helpful.
If I can just address very briefly that one of the situations that we're dealing with is that, you know, for years, our housing staff has focused on apartment buildings and renters. And so, we have lots of attention that's been given to that. We've not had very many condominiums, and we've not had major issues with them. So, we've really not kind of developed an expertise or a round of codes or things that apply to them. We've relied on the county. I'll be introducing in a moment our new housing coordinator. But it's one of a number of different kinds of issues that I think we'll be facing more of, and I appreciate that we'd have to look at this and identify the unique challenges for the different types of housing that we want to provide here.
Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
I haven't forgotten. It's good to be back, actually look forward to it. People think I'm crazy for saying something like that, but they don't understand why I would want to be a city council member in the first place, so, their loss. I just want to say very briefly to Ms. Murphy, you came here, you spoke eloquently. And I know we're going to be talking about this a little later on our agenda tonight, that I too have some of the same family concerns that you do. My family is enriched by having two black son-in-laws, and we have two black grandchildren, both of whom are in their mid-20s, are out in the real world with professional careers, and doing well. But you worry because they're young, they haven't seen as much of the world as older people have. And you just sort of worry about the sort of things that you talked about. I just wanted you to know that I understand where you're coming from. That's all I want to say at this point in time. I'd be happy to chat with you some other time about it. I've long had, changing the subject, an interest in trying to figure out how we can do something to advance the arts and to come apart. I know we have a lot of talented artists here. We witness the shows that get put up in the atrium once a month. And we, but the truth is that we don't have really any serious program about helping artists grow their, to produce their work or grow their professions. And I've long thought that many municipalities do. I mean, one of the most famous situations is in Alexandria City, across the river, the torpedo factory. And I've thought it would be really great, since we've got so many vacant properties or underdeveloped properties on New Hampshire Avenue, if there couldn't be something like that in Tacoma Park to really round out and embellish our cultural strengths. And then, when you go on vacation, you never kind of know what it is that you're going to meet, you're going to run into, that's kind of going to delight your eye and catch you really off guard. But Nancy and I decided to take our camping van and go on an exotic camping trip to Pennsylvania. I don't know if anybody's ever heard of a place like Pennsylvania, but, you know, long ways away, I'm being facetious. And we went up northwestern Pennsylvania to explore the Allegheny National Forest and had lots of funny camping experiences. But we also, just, you learn things. And one of the things, we found ourselves one day in a town of about 10,000 people that was founded almost 200 years ago called Oil City. And guess what? That is the area where the first oil well in America was discovered, not about the time of the Civil War. And it created a land boom and a land rush, and it's a fascinating story. The story that I'm telling you about is that John D. Rockefeller created a, what in the old days was called a trust, where he was able to get complete control over all the oil produced in the United States and ended up making himself the wealthiest man in the world in the era of about a little over 100 years ago. And Oil City is one of those sad cities that is in decline. But it's got a lot of interesting old buildings there. And one of those buildings was the headquarters of Standard Oil back around the beginning, the end of the 19th century, the beginning of the 20th century. It's a magnificent edifice. The city, somebody, a developer wanted about 20 years ago to tear this building down. And Ralph Nader heard about it, and he went up there and bought the building, and turned around and sold it back to the city for a dollar. And that building, which is just, you know, marble staircases and, you know, 20-foot, 15-foot ceilings, giant hall, wall, hallways, and just beautiful architecture. A good section of that building has, one whole floor of it, and it's a huge building, has been dedicated as for the arts. And so, the, there's just scores and scores of artists working out of these rooms that were one time, many, many years ago, occupied by Standard Oil Company. And so, we got a chance to talk to some of the artists. And they say they pay rents of about, that are pennies per square foot, maybe like a little, about 100, swing 70 and $100 a month in rent. And the place is just full of, in fact, artists move. We've met some artists from various parts of the United States who had moved to this little town, obscure, little unhappy, sad-looking town in northwestern Pennsylvania because they could afford the rents and could do what it is they want to do, which is produce all kinds of different art, the whole range of it. And I thought to myself, you know, why, given some of the structures that we have in our city that are grossly underutilized, I won't get into a discussion of that, wouldn't it be great if somehow or another, we could figure out a way to create a space where we could have artists, like an incubator for artists? And when I saw a little teeny-weeny town like that, it's half the size of the population of Tacoma Park, could do something like this, I just thought, my gosh, I wonder if we couldn't do it? And it was very inspiring, particularly when I realized that there was like, we met a couple who had moved to Oil City from Portland, Oregon, of all places. I mean, you talk about a change, because they said this was a great, great place where they could produce art. And I could tell you other stories. It's just a fascinating experience, totally serendipitous experience, nothing we ever expected to discover or much less looking for. But it just kind of shows you what a small towns can do. They're trying to use that as the basis for reinvigorating the economy, which is grossly depleted because of the decline in the value of oil being produced. They're still producing a lot of oil out of the ground. You see pumps all over the countryside pumping oil out of the ground. So, I just wanted to tell people about that, if anybody's listening or interested, that I just want people to understand that this is something that I think, I'd hope, and when we talk about economic development in the city, something that I'm very passionate about, that this could be a piece of that picture. So, I will leave it at that, and hopefully, we'll get somebody, some people interested in sharing their ideas on the subject.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, it is nice to be back, and, but it was also nice being off for a whole month in August. I just wanted to take a minute. I think everyone knows that there was a horrible fire right outside the city limits during August. And I wanted to just take a moment and say how proud I am of our community and the surrounding community in coming together to help in whatever ways people could, the victims of that fire. I especially want to thank the Tacoma Park Police for their quick response that night and the assistance they provided to the victims in trying to help them to escape the immediate danger. But the community has been very responsive, very generous in donating both money and food and clothing and household wares. And I'm sure those things are all helping the victims as they move forward. It's a problem that, you know, there were some very immediate needs that the victims are working through. But this is something that's going to take a long-term solution to help them with, to get back on their feet after this disaster. The various nonprofit organizations and government agencies that have worked on this have been getting together to try to see how well the problem has been addressed and how we can improve things for the future. I think there are some opportunities to be able to respond to these type of events in a better way in the future. But, you know, there were, it was just horrendous what these victims have gone through and kind of the long-term effects on the individuals that survived this fire. One of the challenges, I think, that the nonprofit organizations have realized is needed is much stronger mental health assistance immediately after something like this occurs, but not just immediately after. The effects of this type of event can be very severe and take a long time to work through. And that's something I would certainly be interested in hearing suggestions and feedback from the community. The community has been so generous in things and stuff and money. But how do we, how do we address that other big need with, you know, some of the mental health curing that needs to take place? I thank you.
Any other council comments this evening? Councilmember Kova?
Thank you, Mayor, and good to see all my colleagues again. I've mentioned several times over the recent months the work that we're doing to attempt to modify, in some ways, the building proposals from Montgomery College in the North Tacoma neighborhood. And folks may be aware that the mayor and I had followed up the meeting that she and I, with others, had with the president and other officials of Montgomery College. That meeting happened earlier in the year, and we sent a letter a couple of months after that looking at what they would suggest and how we could work with them on consultation going forward, we hoped, under the terms of the 2002 agreement, calling for consultation. The mayor and I recently received a letter, and if it could be entered into the record of the proceedings tonight, I would appreciate it. And it was a letter from the president, sent to the mayor and myself. I believe everybody on the council has received it also. And, you know, it's one of those things, it's a long letter, it's very detailed, it's about four pages. I'm still parsing through it a little bit, I think, tonally. The tone of it was, to me, better than things we've heard often from the college. And it was a genuine attempt, I thought, to try to reach out to us. One thing that was important within it was that the president offered to come before the city council at an upcoming meeting to make a presentation on what the plans were, longer term and shorter term, for the building projects in North Tacoma. And I think that's a positive sign because I don't think we've had the president here before. And I think a lot of the things that were in the letter sound good if they're followed up by actions that are in line with them. I would feel more positive about it, and I think that's sort of where we are and what we have to see. So, I think it's better to have this letter than not to have it. I think it's a step in the right direction, and I look forward to having the opportunity to continue the dialogue with the president and having the president make a presentation here. So, I think, I don't want to go into all the other details in the letter now, but I'm happy to talk to folks individually about it if they want. The only other thing I wanted to mention was, I hadn't previously been aware that Pastor Greiner was stepping down from the Presbyterian Church in the short amount of time that I've been on the council since he, since the church is in Ward One. He's been quite helpful to me on several occasions, and certainly is a source of good advice and counsel, and a very positive, someone who had a very positive impact on the neighborhood generally and the city as a whole. So, obviously, he's decided the time is right for him to go on and do something else, and no one would begrudge him that. But I just did want to give a brief tribute and express my appreciation to his work in that capacity. Thanks.
You're welcome. All right. I just want to say thank you to everyone. As my colleagues have said, August is a time that we don't have meetings, but, formal meetings like this, but it gives us the opportunity to have even more meetings with constituents and to get to know people in the community a little better. And that was how I got to spend much of my August. I want to thank again Ms. Murphy for all her work on unity in the community, which we'll speak about in a moment. Also, thank the residents who, as Councilmember Siemens said, really came forward after the tragedy on Flower Avenue. And then, I'd also like to thank our police department. As Councilmember Koreshi mentioned, on Sycamore, Columbia, Woodland area, we've had, over the last couple of years, experienced periodic spikes in crime. The police department have held small meetings with the residents, and this August have, you know, got, almost got real close. I stopped a break-in that was happening. And I just want to say, I know the police officers are not on our community lip serves, but I wanted to let you know the residents, particularly on the Sycamore, Woodland, and Columbia area, are very appreciative of the increased patrols in the area and that you all were there when needed. So, thank you so much for that. With that, I will turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you. I'll go through some city manager garments, and then I'll introduce our new staff person. Last Thursday, I was able to attend a ceremony where the Sons of the American Revolution presented the city of Tacoma Park with a commendation in recognition of exemplary patriotism in the display of the flag of the United States of America. It was a very nice ceremony. It was a ceremony related to celebrating public service and public safety officers. There was a number of the members of the group came up to me and said, you know, it may seem a little unusual to have, you know, the Republic of Tacoma Park getting this commendation, but you really do, you know, display the flag nicely. You have your great Independence Day celebration. You are the epitome of kind of small-town America, and they really liked that, and they wanted to give us some kudos for that. Jack Carson, who's a member of our community, is a member of that group and I think sponsored us for that. I'll pass along the commendation, we'll get it mounted. There were also some other wonderful people there getting awards for their bravery or other service, not from Tacoma Park, but it was just a very inspiring evening. And so it was a nice, it was a nice event. Today, I went to the Council of Governments Institute for Regional Excellence poster presentation. Each year, the classes present the topics that they were working on, and I'll share some of that information at another time. But one thing that, because it's Emergency Preparedness Month, I just wanted, they have one, one of their groups focused on that, with encouraging people and getting the message out that people need to be prepared for three days on their own before they might be, kind of, get the power back on or otherwise be serviced in the case of an emergency. And their tagline for this group is "Who Depends on You?" Because, and I thought that was a good way of thinking about it. You know, if you've got family members or neighbors or things that would depend on you in these kinds of emergencies, you know, what would you do and prepare for it? So I thought that was a good approach and something that we might try to get that message out on. We've got follow-up from a couple items from the July council meeting. There've been requests always on what's the status of signals at the junction and the crosswalks. The work is ongoing, and it's been intermittent. It's taken much longer than anticipated. The last update that we received is that they're hoping that the work will be completed in November, and we'll keep on top of that. There was an interesting meeting, when was that?
That's Wednesday.
Geez, seemed like it was longer, about other kinds of safety issues in the junction. And there were some questions and pressure put on the SHA to try to make that a safer area. An update on the Conway Avenue mural design process. We did accept the selected artist's revised drawings on August 8th with some caveats about incorporating some additional aspects of the community. On September 14th and the 21st, from 4:30 PM to 6:30 PM, there'll be student volunteers from area schools assisting with the mural. So I think that's a nice, a nice thing to move forward on. We are also, we'll be providing some information, a draft letter regarding solar roofs in the county, and that's something that will be coming to you. I want to give a couple kudos. One is to Ian Chamberlain, who has done an extraordinary job this summer on difficult projects. The Carroll Avenue Bridge detour routes and project has been an important thing that he's kept tabs on and advocated for the needs of the residents through that process. He's also overseeing our paving operations and sidewalk construction. The Colby Park Playground, which I saw recently, is really a very nice improvement. And he's also the person that often coordinates with utility companies. We'll have some more information on that coming up. I also want to give kudos to our finance and our IT staff, and in particular, Alisa Fadafon from our finance department. We have been, over the past, oh, year and a half, upgrading our financial technology. And one of the things that was taking the longest from the company and getting on board was an accounts receivable and cashiering system. Because of Alisa's real dogged work that got up and running this summer, and it saved us a lot of headaches that we could have had when we start sending out stormwater bills and those kinds of things in the fall. The work that she did was really quite remarkable, and we actually didn't think this would actually be live and working, but it is, and we really appreciate her diligence in that. I do want to give a heads up that both Jason and I will be in Kansas City later in the month, from September 24th to 28th, at the International City County Management Association Conference. And I also want to give a personal note of thank you to all of the, all of you for your nice cards and letters and good wishes on the sudden death of my mother. May to August not as enjoyable as I had been counting on, but the outreach from many of you and the community and my coworkers is really very nice, and I appreciate it very much. I want to introduce Ashley Johnson-Hare, who's our new housing manager. And I know there's a much longer name for your title, but she's our key housing person. I'll just put it like that. And she's got quite a strong background, and I wanted her to introduce herself a little bit and you to get to know her, because as we work forward on, you know, thinking through all of our affordable housing issues and things, she's going to be our key person championing our projects. So Ashley, you want to tell a little bit about yourself?
So, good evening, everyone. My name is Ashley Johnson-Hare. I'm a native of Baltimore. I studied at the University of Chicago. I've got some multifamily asset management background from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development, some housing and some affordable housing programming background from the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, some other background from some other CDFIs in the area. So I've been around in Maryland in terms of community development, so I'm really excited to work for a small city and kind of see how housing works in a place where there are different cultures and different economic backgrounds. So I've already been answering the calls and the emails. I'm really getting my feet wet after like three weeks. So if you need me, email me, call me, I'm here.
One of the things that she's working right now on is kind of what we're going to put out for some consultant assistance on housing things, as well as some of the first steps that we're going to be taking with the mortgage assistance program.
Thank you, guys.
We're really happy to have her here.
I'm happy to be here.
Thank you, welcome. Anything else?
That's it.
Great. We did have some minutes that were passed around that we were going to vote on tonight. People had a chance to look at them?
Yeah.
All right. We have minutes from June 15th, July 20th, and July 27th. Would someone like to move the adoption of the amendments? Councilmember Siemens, Councilmember Mail second. Any discussion or changes for the city clerk? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. All right, we adopted the minutes. All right, now we have our voting session. And our first item tonight is a resolution supporting the Unity in the Community Initiative. And again, as we heard from Ms. Murphy, who spoke about this, I just want to say from my perspective, this is something that I, I can't believe we just had the conversation about a month ago. And Ms. Murphy, along with working with Captain Collington, has done a great deal to help pull together the kickoff event that will be on September 25th from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM at the Capital City Cheesecake. But really, this is just the kickoff. The idea is that unity in the community is an initiative that will be owned by the whole community. And so that was one of the reasons why we thought it would be good to, as a council, consider this resolution. It's short, so I would just like actually to read it tonight. It's our resolution supporting the Unity in the Community Initiative. Whereas, given the backdrop of what is happening around the country, Tacoma Park is not immune to the feelings of frustration, sadness, and anger when we witness violence and injustice taking place. And whereas, in particular, young people of color in our community are affected by these events that are shaped by their, that are shaping their childhoods, whom they trust and how they interact with each other, police officers and the world. And whereas, Megan Murphy, co-owner of Capital City Cheesecake, approached Mayor Kate Stewart and Tacoma Park Police Captain Tyrone Collington with the idea of hosting an event to bring together our police officers and residents in our community, particularly young people. And whereas, that idea has grown into the Unity in Community Initiative, created to rally members of the Tacoma Park community to take proactive steps to start conversations and establish partnerships of trust through relationship-building events to unite our police officers and the community. And whereas, the kickoff event will be a block party at Capital City Cheesecake on September 25th from 4:00 PM to 7:00 PM. And whereas, the city of Tacoma Park will be a partner with the community in this effort. Now therefore, be it resolved that the council of the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland, expresses its thanks to Ms. Murphy for creating the idea and offering Capital City Cheesecake as a location for the first Unity in the Community event. And be further resolved that the city council encourages residents to participate in this event, volunteer, lend services, and join together to organize other unity in the community events throughout the year. Would someone like to move this resolution?
Someone would.
All right. The Councilmember Smith moved, Councilmember Siemens second. Any discussion or comments on the resolution? Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to thank you and Ms. Murphy for bringing this forward. I think it's something that this community has talked about, the need for addressing this issue, and I'm really happy to see that someone has stepped forward and not only recognizing the problem, but taking the initiative and the time and energy to move us forward and prod us forward in this. I really look forward to working on this and seeing how it develops. So I thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
Yeah, I want to compliment both the mayor and Ms. Murphy and Captain Collington for this initiative. I'm really strongly convinced that the best way to address these, the issues that have been talked about so much recently is by helping the young people in this community get to literally meet and talk to the police, you know, the members of the Tacoma Park Police Force, whether they're in uniform or they're non-uniform people. Because I just feel that facial familiarity, where the police officers know the young people, not all of them are going to know all of them, of course, and where the, where the young people see a police officer and they say, oh, I remember, I've met him or her. That kind of stuff, which is very completely routine, it's the sort of thing in small-town rural America that happened without even thinking about it. But today, because so many of our police officers operate out of automobiles and they have all this technology to communicate, a lot of times, the law enforcement is going well. You know, our police department's done a really wonderful job over the years. In all my years on the city council, I've almost never heard any complaints of commission or omission. But the simple fact of the matter is, is that the men and women of the police force are driving by in their vehicles, and they come through the community, and you might sort of wave, or you might not. It's impersonal, and it's not intended to be impersonal, because I know so many of the people who serve in the police department, and I know, I know that this is, they want, they want to have the trust and the support, and they want the community to think of themselves as partners with them in crime prevention and so forth. But the fact of the matter is, is that the old-fashioned idea of a police officer strolling down the street with his, with his twirling, his, whatever you call it, stick, and saying, you know, saying good afternoon, good morning, good evening, and to, you know, knowing Little Johnny and Little Suzie and all this sort of thing is a myth, is really largely a myth in modern America, in an urban, certainly in an urban area like this, notwithstanding all the good wishes and goodwill on the part of our police officers. So this is, this sort of thing that we're talking about here that has been proposed, I think is something that really will help, you know, get people literally face-to-face, the young people, not, you don't need to worry about me, but, you know, the young people that need to be, feel like there is familiarity. And I believe that kind of familiarity enhances trust, foments trust, and reduces fear and reduces anxiety. And I think this is the way to go, and I think we need to be able to do a lot of this sort of thing. Sorry to take up so much time.
Thank you. Councilmember Koreshi?
Thanks, Mayor. I equally wanted to thank the mayor, Ms. Murphy in particular, Captain Collington, the chief, and the entire police department for supporting this. For me, I mean, any event that brings me back to Capital City Cheesecake is good enough so I can get another pesto delight or a coffee or whatever it may be. But I just wanted to raise one important point to me personally. I mean, I think it's no, no secret that I'm a man of color, and that growing up, me personally, had, growing up in the Philadelphia area, had distrust with the police. And it's entirely related to my personal interactions with the police. And it's funny, because I look at that, and I look at my, that's a reminder, but I look at that and compare that to when I was in college at a predominantly white school, and we got pulled over in a car. And my reaction to being pulled over versus my white counterparts in my car, it was a difference, it was like day and night. Like, I was freaking out, and it was just because, you know, we were being stupid. We were being stupid college kids versus them thinking everything's going to be fine. So I think to lose sight of the fact and do a community bottom-up sort of approach to this issue rather than responding to a, God forbid, tragedy, I think is a testament to this community. And people in this community who are going to say, you know what? Let's just address this elephant in the room. And I'll be honest with you, I became a prosecutor, and I prosecute in DC, because I felt that there needed to be more people of color on the prosecution side who had discretion, who understand the perils of our communities to deal with these issues. And I commend everybody in this room who's involved in this effort and believe that it's important, not only for the community, but another thing that we've all talked about, and I think people have read, is recently out of Baltimore, and ma'am, I know you're from Baltimore, our new city staff member, you used to work there, is a report that came out by the Department of Justice, my employer, in Baltimore about the inherent distrust between the community and the Baltimore Police Department. And I think one thing that's relevant in that report, which is more important than anything, is that effective policing relies on trust between the community and police officers. And one particular aspect of that, which I want to quote, is, "Frayed community relationships inhibit effective policing by denying officers important sources of information and placing them more frequently in dangerous and adversarial encounters." So this not only benefits the community and people of color within the community, but it benefits our own police department, who we entrust to protect every member of our community. So I think it's a great effort. I think the resolution is fine. To the extent we want to incorporate something that talks about how this also helps the community or the police department, I'm fine with that as well. But I just say all this to say that I, you know, this is a testament to Tacoma Park, and this is why we are what we are, because doing this, I think, sends a very important message that you don't have to react to tragedy, but that you take proactive steps in your community to address these fundamental distrusts that exist, and it's a part of life. And it may be citizens versus the police department, or citizens between, and then their city staff. It's just a matter of how people interact with the, you know, the state, for lack of a better term. So I just want to commend Ms. Murphy especially for doing this and opening up your business to do this. So thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Murphy.
First, I'd like to thank you, Ms. Murphy, Captain Collington, and the police department for taking on this very huge issue. You know, I've, I've thought about this a million times now. I mean, this is not something that's new, this is something that's been going on in communities of color for our, the police department's job. For many years was not to protect people of color. I, I mean, that's just the historical record. So, you know, we're shifting gears now, we're asking them to do something that traditionally they did not do, and many departments were not integrated, and that's another thing that's new. I mean, the Voting Rights Act, Civil Rights Act, we're talking fifty years. But how do we, as a society, as a community, as a country, how do we get around these issues? Because I, at this point, I believe the issues with the police department are just a symptom to a bigger problem. And there's a recent book that I'm reading by Dr. Mark Lamont Hill, it's called Nobody. And he talks about how the country has changed and has, and now exposition that people of color and even poor people are just not part of the conversation anymore. That we have decided that these people need to be treated in a different manner. These people do not have rights as other people in the country do, or even in our community do. They do not have access to resources, they do not have good schools, they do not have good housing opportunities. I mean, there are just so many things that have, I would say afflicted, people of color since the beginning, that just continue to perpetuate on African Americans, Hispanics, and other poor people. So I applaud your effort, but we need to dig, I think, much, much, much deeper on this issue. I mean, it, it's just overwhelming, you know. I didn't, I didn't grow up fearing the police, because the police were never around, right? I grew up in communities that were ninety-nine percent white. The only black kid I knew growing up was my sister. So the police never came around, and maybe that was because of my dad's job, he was a twenty-one-year intelligence officer for the United States Army. My cousins are retired two-star generals. I have another cousin, he's a retired full colonel. The police were never part of our community as in they had to visit because there were issues. But moving here on the East Coast, it is just, it's a different world, how the police interact with people of color. It's like, it's like they flipped a switch and said that you guys are bad, and we need to deal with you in a certain way. So, Ms. Murphy, thank you very much. I would love to, if there's any way I can help, just reach out to me. But we need to dig much deeper than this, because this is a big, much bigger issue, much bigger. Thank you.
Councilmember Ma.
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to simply say thank you, and please let us and myself know however we can help. Plan to vote for the, the resolution tonight, we're having further discussions about police community relations initiatives, something we've been working on for a long time. And it's not just about this one step or the second one step we're talking about tonight, but it's about sort of trying to reset and move forward in a new way, and I really appreciate the work that you're doing to help us do that, and happy to help out whoever I can. Thank you.
Councilmember McCovar?
Thank you. Another appreciation to Ms. Murphy and Captain Collington and the mayor for setting this up. I just want to say a couple of things. I think one of the biggest challenges we face in the city is not specifically about the police, but in a broader way about inclusiveness and how we promote and encourage that. And I think this is sort of a piece of that, and as, as Councilmember Smith said, it's a much larger question than just the city itself can, can solve, but I think it's really important to get started. And I think this is one of the things where having this process begin will be helpful, even if we don't know exactly where it's going to go. And it's building on other things. We had the National Night Out, which was really successful recently, and the police did a, did a great job with that, and we've had various neighborhood meetings that we've all been a part of, I think, which have also been great. So it isn't that there's been nothing before, and it isn't that this will solve everything, it's that this is another really good, I think, positive step that can set us moving in a very positive direction. But again, I think there's this broader question, which includes housing and a lot of other issues that we face and that we're going to be talking about tonight and later, which is this question of inclusiveness, and this is a piece of that. And so I think it's great that this is happening, I also look forward to being a part of it, and thanks for getting it started.
All right. All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, our second voting item tonight is the consent agenda. Who would like to move the consent agenda?
I'll move it.
Councilmember Schultz, second.
Second.
Councilmember Ma. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, that passes. I need a break. I'm sorry. We'll just take a really quick five-minute break and then come back and do our work sessions.
It's hard after being off.
I can see.[1004.75]
Okay. All right. Start again. Take two.
Well, I just wanted to say that as we were thinking about items that needed to be brought before the city council after recess, one of the top items was an update on the status of road and utility projects. We had a lot of surprises over the summer. We certainly had a lot that went on with the Carroll Avenue Bridge closure. A lot of surprise utility problems that popped up. And then we also received more information on projects we didn't know were before us. And so I've asked our Public Works Director, Darryl Braythwaite, to go over a number of the items so that we're up to date on them. We've identified a little bit of information in your package. We do want you to also keep attuned to the project description, the project information directory for many of these projects. Darryl, could you come up? And I think the thing that, we'll start with the planned road work, but I think some of the bigger surprises have to do with utilities. So why don't you go over the items that are here and...
Sure. I'll just walk through that. Hand out that you all have quickly, and then if any questions come up or additional information's needed, just let me know. We are currently in the midst of preparing roads for a resurfacing project that will be done by WSSC. As Fred Schultz knows, his Ward, New Hampshire Gardens, has been the recipient of a massive water main replacement project just about every street, except for about a block or two in the whole neighborhood division is, has undergone a water main upgrade. That work went fairly smoothly, not without its usual inconvenience to residents and dust and dirt and noise. The project is finished. We anticipate WSSC through contractor will be milling and repaving the streets. In talking with the city engineer and our construction manager prior to that beginning, we decided that we could get the most bang for the buck if we made sure that all the curb work was in good shape and any of the pavement defects, the subsurface pavement defects, not related to the utility trench itself, were taken care of. That way, that new pavement that we're getting from the utility company as a result of their work will last the 20 years that it would had we've been doing it ourselves. So it's a unique approach, and we're spending some money upfront, but the value of that repaving that the WSSC is doing will mean that those work, those streets' conditions in that area is going to be in very good shape for a very long time into the future. I think on your upcoming agenda, you have some information from us to present regarding our new pavement condition survey, and so we'll be letting you know about current situation with street condition and how it's been improved as a result of this significant amount of money that the city has put forward every year in our pavement program. We do have some resurfacing work planned this year as usual. The list of streets that we anticipate getting to include Winding Hill Way, Greenwood Avenue, Crescent Place, Geneva Avenue, and Montgomery Avenue. The list is not as long as our typical list, again, because we're doing base pavement work and curb and gutter work in Ward Six, which will take up a significant amount of the $500,000 that we spend each year on paving. We anticipate getting the paving work program started this fall, so that'll be taking place most likely in end of September and October. With regard to the Flower Avenue Green Street, we are continuing to move forward. We are at a 90% design stage and have had meetings with State Highway that have been very productive. We're preparing to move to the 95 and then 100% design plan in preparation for going out to bid. One of the things that needs to happen before that project is started is for Washington Gas to come in and complete the gas main replacement work that is needing to take place so that that utility work is in shape before we come in and do our Green Street project. Washington Gas indicated that they will be back on Flower Avenue to do that gas main work in November. And in talking with them recently, we've asked that they do a neighborhood community meeting, because in addition to the Flower Avenue gas main work, they've let us know that they're going to be doing several other neighborhoods adjacent to that, to the east outside of the city, and East Silver Spring, and also to the south of Carroll Avenue, including Carroll Avenue between Flower Avenue and Garland Avenue. So the Long Branch Ligo neighborhood will also be the recipients of new gas main work. They anticipate that program getting started in October and running through March of next year. One concern that we have, and we still haven't got a resolution on it, once we heard of the plans to do the additional work outside of Flower Avenue, it became clear that they were going to be using a section of Carroll Avenue for gas main work and requiring a single lane closure on Carroll Avenue between Long Branch Parkway and Flower Avenue, the main route of the Carroll Avenue Bridge detour. And when we expressed our dismay and said, "You'll never get a permit from State Highway," they showed us their permit from State Highway. So we said, "Oh, okay." We've made a flurry of calls to State Highway about our concerns and protecting their project and our transportation routes going through and around the Carroll Avenue Bridge closure. We haven't got much traction yet. We may need your assistance in getting, getting sound minds to take a look at that. One of the interesting things in our area is that in order for a detour around that work, we'll need Montgomery County to approve that detour because it'll be Montgomery County streets and not city streets.
If I can, and if I can interrupt, I did get a call from Monica Ettinger from Sheila Hickson's office, who lives in the affected area and had found out and heard some of the information. And she does pledge Sheila Hickson's assistance if, if for some reason we're not getting this worked out well.
Yep. So that is, we'll be kind of on a fast track. We have set up a community meeting through Washington Gas originally. It was going to be in the Lilac Room in the community center. We may try to get a larger venue, perhaps at Washington Venice University, per Council Member Smith's suggestion, for Washington Gas to do a neighborhood presentation to the affected area about their gas main work. We've been expecting the Flower Avenue work, we just hadn't been expecting the rest of the neighborhood. And that's going to all take place en masse beginning this fall. One of the other things that we'll be bringing forward to you later this month is an agenda item requesting additional and hopefully final additional funding for the Flower Avenue design. I won't go into much of that detail at this point. It'll be in your council packet, but we need an additional about $46,000 to finalize the design package, go through all the State Highway and permitting process, and be ready to put that project out, out to bid. The total design cost for that project will be, end up being about $575,000, $573 or $4 before it all is said and done. The funds for that have been coming to us from State Highway through the original provision of money as part of the MOU when we took over that street. That brings us to the Ethan Allen Streetscape Project. It is, has been completely designed and approved and reviewed by State Highway, no small feat. That project is going to be, going out to bid, and construction activity should take place in the spring of next year. They anticipate a winter bid process. Because it is federal funding and State Highway approval required, there will be a long process of the bid process, the selection of the contractors, the approval of the ward, and then finally the notice to proceed. So that will be a many, many month-long process. We're just glad that Ethan Allen is going through it before Flower Avenue. We've been able to do a lot of lessons learned. They both received the same source of funding for a large portion of the program, the Transportation Alternatives Program. And so we've been doing double duty on our lessons learned for that. Susie mentioned the Carroll Avenue Bridge project. Of any project taking place that we were looking forward to, that was one that we were most significantly worried about. Our experience here on the city level has been that detour route and the construction program has really gone remarkably smoothly, especially if you think back to what was happening a couple of years ago with the last State Highway Bridge project at New Hampshire and Sligo Creek Parkway. It's clear that the efforts in planning and communication that State Highway staff undertook really made a huge difference in how that project has laid out, and also all your efforts in notifying people, talking about it, promoting it, all the community meetings that we've had. I think people are fairly well aware of it. It isn't to say that there's occasional slowdown in traffic and difficulties, but for the most part, we found both State Highway and the contractor to be remarkably responsive and have helped us work through those issues as residents bring it to our attention. I just learned today that there's likely to be another Sligo Creek Parkway closure at the end of September. They're going to be pouring the deck beams over Sligo Creek Park. And we don't know the exact details yet. They talked about the week of September 26th. We don't know if they need all the week, just day hours or nighttime. We don't know any more detail than that. In the past, when they've had to close Sligo Creek Parkway, we used the Lincoln Avenue Maple Avenue alternative detour route. A little side note, once the detour went into effect, Ridenon decided to follow its own detour plan and disregard, disregard the planning that was in place two years prior to that. And we've had a number of emails, phone calls, and conversations. We've been informed that Ridenon has now agreed to follow the original detour plan, but they wouldn't be able to do that until September 18th, I believe.
Yeah, probably right before the new detour starts.
Yeah, right. Coming, coming the week of September 18th or in that general vicinity, they will reroute their buses to follow the original detour plan, which is the same as the car detour plan. Unfortunately, since the detour started, they started using Lincoln Avenue for the buses instead of Old Carroll, as was planned, and that has created some problems for traffic on Lincoln Avenue, and quite frankly, problems for the buses themselves making the turns. And a lot of confusion on the part of people who are waiting at the bus stops and not understanding. There was also difficulty for residents on Maple Avenue. We had to go all the way to the metro station in order to get a bus to come back to get off at Maple and Lincoln. So we've been told those problems will be resolved within a week or two. Let's see. There are a number of, a total of 15 intersections in the city where to undergo upgrades for traffic signal, primarily pedestrian signals, though there was one at Tacoma and 410 that was, got a signal replacement itself, in addition to some pedestrian access and curb work. The contractor for that has been incredibly slow. And State Highway let us know that they've extended their contract to November, as Susie mentioned. So we do anticipate that the remaining work will be completed by the end of November. That includes the Grant Avenue crosswalk, the markings, the curb ramp work. So we do anticipate seeing that being completed soon. There will also be other improvements at various intersections along Philadelphia Avenue, including Tacoma Avenue, Piney Branch, Maple Avenue, and Carroll and Philadelphia, and then along Carroll Avenue up until the bridge. A couple other crosswalks that Mayor Stewart and Tim Mill were responsible for getting, moved along through the State Highway Transportation Office or Engineering Office was the crosswalks along Carroll Avenue at Manor Circle and near Boyd. And so those are in place, well-marked, and I always see people using them, so especially now that school is back in session. That covers the road work that we're aware of. I can jump into the utility work. We've already talked a bit about that. We do have plenty of Pepco, both maintenance pruning work as well as new construction work that's taking place. We do have a fairly extensive list of plans on our, on the city's project directory that we have received from Pepco and provide that to people so that if they have a question, they can take a look at it and try to decipher the map, which is fairly complicated to understand where they're doing prunings and where they're doing removals. There's been a lot of activity this week in particular after sort of a lull. So we've been getting a lot of calls from folks about Asplin crews and Pepco crews in the neighborhood. So they are doing part of their reliability work related to the utility clearance. We mentioned the Washington Gas work, and I think I've gone through that, as well as the upcoming meeting on September 22nd. We are still waiting to get some additional information back on a very significant WSSC sewer and water main project that affects the residents on Eastern Avenue and West Morland Avenue. That's, as many of you know, been going on for several years. In the last session of community meetings and site visits, WSSC indicated they'd ask their engineers to go back, sort of to take a finer look at some of the proposals and ideas that had been presented by the community and others, and they were going to get their final designs completed and presented, they thought, either end of September or early October. So we're anticipating starting to get some communication back and forth with WSSC. At this point, I'm not sure what the next steps will be, whether we'll encourage them to have another community meeting or sort of how we'll be moving forward. In addition to their final plan work, they also are on record as providing some more complete environmental impact assessment, which includes hydrology as well as surface water and subsurface water impacts related to their planned work. So we do anticipate seeing a bit more evaluation of those types of impacts in addition to the tree impacts, which had been previously talked about. We have started some sidewalk work. As you know, each year we do 88 compliance work along the sidewalks. We're going to be starting that work on Erie Avenue, which was the last street in Ward Five that we didn't do last year, so we kind of pick it up where we've left off. We'll probably get just that street done before we stop for the winter months. We really now try to stop any of our new concrete work in October so that we don't exacerbate early failure of concrete due to temperatures and water and freezing. We are in fairly far along in the Lincoln Avenue sidewalk project. We'll be having the next neighborhood meeting on September 15th to review the plans. I think they're pretty close to final. The neighborhood did select which side of the street they were going to pursue, and we've been working on that design now since the last meeting earlier in the summer. We also have been notified that this project will be funded through state routes to school. So we anticipate going through that process, which requires a competitive bid as well as State Highway approval of the expenditure of those monies. And we're anticipating construction in the spring, providing the final plan is reviewed with not too many more changes, and then we go through the voting process in the neighborhood. Prior to this, there's been pretty overwhelming support in terms of responses from the residents to the initial design vote. We'll be following that up with the construction vote once we arrive at a final design. There are several sidewalks that are currently in the design queue. Glen Side Drive through the New Hampshire Gardens Citizens Association made a request, I think it might be almost a year and a half or two years ago now, that is the next one up, as well as the 7900 Block of Maple Avenue. And then the most recent request we received was from the 900 Black of Larch. We will be asking our on-call engineering firms to give us price proposals on those design developments. We don't anticipate being able to go into design with all of them, but you know, as they were, you know, as they came in, we'll start working on them in the order they were received. So we'll be starting that in the fall and winter of upcoming at the end of this year. And I think that's, as much as we had previously planned to talk about, unless there's any other questions or more details needed.
That's Member Smith.
Ms. Braythwaite, I want to say thank you very much for the presentation. I appreciate you coming out to the community meeting last week. Residents really enjoyed talking to the actual director of Public Works. Couple questions regarding one, Winding Hill Way, will the gate be opened so that the entire road can be repaved? Have you talked to the landlord?
Well, we had a letter developed by...
I think we're waiting for some follow-up.
Yeah, yeah. Our city attorney has developed a plan based on the meeting with council, and I think that's the route we're pursuing to, you know, move forward and trying to open it up.
Okay. So we anticipate paving the entire road, right?
We're certainly able to, providing we have that aspect of it worked out at the end.
Okay. Regarding the utilities, you know, it's just been extremely frustrating dealing with Washington Gas. And this, the last-minute notice, all this work that they're doing in the city. Is there anything that you could ask from us to do, other than, you know, we are going to take this track on state legislation, right? But is there anything else that we can do, somebody we can call to get better information earlier? Because that's the thing that residents really hate. It's the last-minute piece of it, you know? They come home and there's a notice in, on their door or whatever, it says, "Oh, next week, all this construction work is going to happen." You know, I mean, people want a plan, people want some time to, you know, change their, the time they leave to go to work or whatever, so that they don't get caught in the construction.
Yeah, yeah. I don't know the best answer to that. One of the things that I was reminded recently is Montgomery County and WSSC, I think Montgomery County required of WSSC for them to develop an automated system that tracks their projects. And so that is fully functional now from WSSC. WSSC has indicated that they are willing and able to take information from other utilities and populate that same database to try to identify conflicts and schedules. And so that's probably the best avenue going forward to use that, that software and that program that WSSC has established. I can get some more information about that. Not being a technical person myself in that regard, I have to have other people explain it to me. But there is a, there is a very extensive program that WSSC has established for that very purpose of planning, scheduling, and conflict identification.
Okay. Now, you know, we had the water main break on Maple and Maplewood during the summer. Some additional work needed to be done, but there was a disconnect, I'll say, in communicating with, with me. I talked to the deputy general manager, Joe Matura, and he said that his staff talked to Ian Chamberlain, and they had worked out when this work was going to happen, but the information didn't flow up. So the residents knew these things were going to go on. Ridenon didn't know, so that maybe they could have another detour. So there was just a huge backup while all this work was going on.
On that, on that day?
Yes.
Ian did not know about it. I reported it to him. So there was some other mix-up about getting him the information.
And I think the communication on, from my office to WSSC was, "This has to get done before the detour route goes into effect." And so, as you know, Monday was the day the detour route was going to affect. So they were there on Friday, well, the break happened on Friday.
The break happened on Thursday, yeah.
So that was an unplanned event, but they were doing their best. I mean, typically, and you probably have all experienced this yourselves, when WSSC does even a planned repair, let alone an emergency repair, you usually are six months to eight months out before they come back and do the final patch and pave. So to their credit, they moved very fast on this one, knowing this was a sensitive intersection and the source of a lot of concern on the part of the city. So I think from WSSC's perspective, they were moving heaven and earth to get out there to do the permanent patch, and were a little bit sort of surprised by the reaction they received when people freaked out. The contractor that came to do that work had no detour signs, was unaware that it was a detour route. And so what we spent the morning doing is pulling detour signs from QWIT, the bridge contractor, to use for the WSSC contractor. So there just was not communication on WSSC's side as to what the intersection meant, what was going on. They were unaware that they needed to detour traffic through that intersection at the same time. So sometimes the best plans just fall apart in implementation. But, I mean, we can certainly continue to try to work as we do with the utilities and make sure that when we tell them they need to be done with something by a certain date, we might add additional information with regard to what they could anticipate having to do.
I would just add that I called the general manager of WSSC at home on Sunday and told her to move heaven and earth. So that's why we got the response we did. Regarding Erie Avenue, was this always in the queue?
For the sidewalk work?
Yes. Because I was at the Labor Day cookout with Mayor Stewart, and residents seemed to be flummoxed. They just didn't know what to do and what was going on. And there was a piece of paper left on residents' doors, and I don't know if there was anyone's name on it.
Oh, yes, yes. It's the same, it's a standard notice, which is actually quite detailed. So I was a little surprised that they were flummoxed. It gives very specific information about, "This is part of the pedestrian walkability program, been in place since 2010. We spend money every year on sidewalks to bring them into compliance, how they may be affected, including driveways, curb ramps." I mean, I'll be happy to share the flyer with you. It's one we've used every time we do a sidewalk project. It gives Ian's name, email, phone number. It lets, it lets them know in advance the work was, we're actually not going to start till probably Thursday this week. It may get delayed even farther. So they had the notice last week well in advance. I mean, we typically try to give at least three days' notice for this type of work. So we were way above our usual notice framework. And it, you know, we didn't send Erie Avenue a notice last year because we weren't doing the work then. You know, we have a certain amount of funding, and we were working our way through Ward Five, and we got as far as we got on Maple Avenue, if you recall, the little additional sidewalk work we did and some of the work along Maple Avenue. And we got as far as we got on Maple Avenue, if you recall, the little additional sidewalk work we did and some of the work along Maple Avenue. So Erie was the last street that we had left in Ward Five to complete.
Could I just ask in the future, can you send me the notice also so I could put it on the list, sir? Just so that residents, you know, I mean, all bases are covered.
Sure, sure, yeah.
And regarding WSSC's work on Flower Avenue, when do you anticipate that's going to start? Is that going to be-
WSSC's, the Water Main?
Yes.
It'll be, it'll be part of our contract, part of the rest of the work. So the Water Main work will be tied into the curb gutter and sidewalk work.
So nothing's changed, we're still on schedule with that? Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you very much.
And I'd just like to add that Mr. Chamberlain did answer an email on Labor Day afternoon while we were still at the cookout. So we were able to answer people's questions. Given, I just want to ask my colleagues, given that the hour is 9:25 and we have a couple of other work sessions, I don't want to cut off this conversation. But if there are maybe some very specific things that you, we can also follow up with Ms. Braithwaite separately as well. So I'll just go down the list. Councilmember Kovar.
Well, I'll try to be quick. There's a lot of issues and we've talked about them with Philadelphia Avenue. There seems a new one every day. Maybe part of the problem is it has three names because it's called Philadelphia Avenue, East West Highway, and Route 410. And so maybe that has somehow adds to it. But I do just want to circle back on, and maybe you can reach out to State Highway, which I've done also. There's the really invisible now crosswalk right in front of the library, which is, I think, bad at school time. And they need to, they need to address that. We have that very serious issue and I'm going to just mention to the chief, I don't think he's aware of it, but on the hill coming down, where the patch was made, as you go down the hill toward Piney Branch, and this is a very narrow thing, so I'll try to be quick about it. Because of high speed that happens on the hill, particularly with larger vehicles, several houses in the area shake to the level where stuff falls off the walls. And so apparently to get the speed limit modified even from, say, 30 to 25, I think the state likes to hear from our folks. And maybe that's something that, that the police could, could take a look at. But going down the hill, you end up going over 40 even if you're not trying. And so I think that's the, that's where that problem comes in. But I hear from those folks regularly and I think we need to try to address that. And then the, the two other things on Philadelphia, three other things on Philadelphia. There's a sidewalk by the intermediate park across the street from McCorry College, which is just un-navigable for anybody in a wheelchair or a, with a stroller. So it literally is a violation of the ADA. It's a stretch of a couple hundred feet long. And I know that's not on the list, but there's got to be some way to be able to address that. And again, it's not just a little section, it's a, it's a huge part. So I don't know how we would do that. I mean, is that the state, is that us?
We were going to start with asking the state if they can incorporate it in any existing projects that they have currently available. That was what Richard Baker, the project manager out there, indicated we should do when we brought that issue up to him previously. So we were going to first ask State Highway if they had any way of taking that on and sending them some documentation to help move that along.
Okay.
But raises the issue that Tim had asked me earlier in the summer as well about the process for sidewalk improvements along state roads. We do have funding, starting in FY '18, to start the work along sidewalks, along state highways. We do not yet have a working agreement with State Highway as to the process that we'll use to, to get that work taken. State Highway's position is that the maintenance of sidewalks adjacent to state roads is the municipality or local jurisdiction's responsibility, not theirs. However, they do require the same permitting process and plan development that they typically would require a utility or anybody else. So we're going to try to see if we can't streamline that process and do a program that we're doing similar on city sidewalks where we design in the field and make those improvements as we go. Tim had raised some similarly impassable sidewalks along Carroll Avenue between the hospital driveway and Garland Avenue, I believe, or just even up to Flower. As part of the Carroll Avenue Bridge Project, this issue was raised by a number of residents at several of the community meetings to the point in which State Highway agreed to do a sidewalk improvement project. One of the challenges of that particular stretch of road is that in order to do anything with sidewalks, which are so narrow and the utility poles are in the way, you have to affect the roadway configuration. So obviously, even if we wanted to, the city couldn't do anything there. State Highway has to be involved in addressing their lane widths. So they've agreed to design a project to deal with the sidewalk issues from the hospital entrance to, I believe, either Garland or Long Branch Parkway. I can't remember how far they extended that. But they do have a project in design in their queue and I'll follow up with them to see where it is. They have had one community meeting, I think it was last year, about it. And so we'll, I'll follow up and let you know sort of where things stand. In addition to signal work that's got to be done there, there's utility pole work and, as I mentioned, roadway configuration and retaining wall issues. It's a, it's a fairly complicated stretch of, of road.
Just another couple of really quick things. So Ms. Braithwaite, you and I exchanged emails about the possible additional safety features where Park hits Philadelphia. And so I hope we'll hear something soon about that. I think you mentioned that was coming and-
Yeah, that's a funding issue that we're waiting to get the final answer in a state routes, Safe Routes to School project. And once we hear where the final funding is, then all of the projects will be-
So you mentioned earlier, and I appreciate it, the intersection with Tacoma Avenue and Philadelphia Avenue, or 410 or East West Highway, where SHA apparently didn't know that it was a historic district they were operating and put in new signals that are inappropriate for that. So my initial attempt was, SHA was, that's nice, but we're not making any changes. Do we think we have any further leverage there? And also on the question of how wide the right-of-way is, which affected the residents. Have you heard anything further on that?
We sent to State Highway the plat maps we have through Montgomery County that show Philadelphia with a 40-foot right-of-way. State Highway seems to think they have a 70-foot right-of-way. We've encouraged the resident who's most directly impacted to follow up with them and, and push that issue even further, since her property's impacted. The response that we've gotten relative to the issues at Philadelphia and Tacoma is that they will change the curb ramp colors. They're not going to change the signal poles. It's standard for what they do. Haven't gotten much traction on that. And again, as I mentioned, they indicated, based on their information, they're within their right-of-way.
Okay. Last thing on the, on the Pepco pruning. Do, other than the emails that get sent out by the arbers, which are helpful, though hard to read sometimes, do they send separate notices to the affected people?
Yes, yeah. Pepco does flyering. The other thing that happens, again, depending on the level of work that's being done, they have to actually get an agreement with the property owner. If they're going to do any tree removals on their property, the property owner has to sign an agreement. And there's a whole process that's documented through that before it comes to us. So, yeah, there's general notices that go out about the maintenance pruning, which can be done months and months in advance. So sometimes there's a disconnect. We got this thing last year and they're showing up.
Yeah, I think that there would be some way to have the notice come out when it might happen, you know, within a week. That would be a lot, a lot better for people. Thanks.
Councilmember Mel.
Thank you. A couple of issues. One, there's a longstanding WSSC stormwater, I think, sewer replacement along Sligo Creek. And currently, the staging area is right where Flower crosses Sligo Creek Parkway. That staging area is also exactly where we have a planned project to take away the road surface. Is there any way to combine that project or the end of that project with our construction project?
That's what we are hoping. We're going to have a, the first meeting in a while, we met with Park and Planning, who owns both that area and is overseeing and permitting the WSSC sewer replacement work there. Having a meeting with them onsite Friday to talk about sort of what to do in the interim. We have a proposed design that everybody's, you know, in concept agreed to, Park and Planning, the city. We have an engineering firm that's been developing that design. We recently notified them that we'd like to take that, you know, we're ready now to take that design to a further level. So we'll be working with Park and Planning to finalize the design. And then we'll have to go through the whole permitting process with them, which we're getting more and more familiar with of late. But it does, you know, it does add some complications. My understanding, and I'll know more after Friday, is Park and Planning is going to recommend that we leave the staging area as WSSC has left it until we do our work and try to, you know, basically leave that intersection narrowed, rather than have them restore something that we're just going to take up and remove again. So I anticipate that it'll continue to look pretty much the same way it's left now after the contractor does the sewer work, unless Park and Planning has some concerns and wants lanes widened.
Do you know when the sewer work is planned to be completed?
They're just about done now, yeah. Yeah, they're very close to being completed.
Well, it would be a small victory to, to not restore the site and then remove it again, so.
And Park and Planning is definitely interested in that. Of course, WSSC, it's all the same with them, they're fine, the contractor's happy to leave it alone. So I think we've got forces working in our favor there.
Okay. A second issue, and this may have changed at this point, but as of about a month ago, on Piney Branch Avenue, where it crosses Sligo Creek, they had detoured the crosswalk. And the crosswalk was now in a space where there was no signal. It was further away from the intersection. Is that still the status quo?
It is status quo. I think it's still another month or so away before, before it changes.
Okay. And I've received numerous complaints about the danger-
It's very unsafe.
And, you know.
The advantage is that it will be much better when it's done, but yeah, it's a tough, it's a tough location.
Because cars don't stop for pedestrians there.
Right.
And then the Lincoln Avenue sidewalk project. Could you give a timeline for that? You indicated that we would have to go through the bidding process because it's Safe Routes to Schools funding. And I'm just conscious of how long-
Yes, how long that has taken. We hope that office is fully staffed, which was an issue when we were doing 1000 Elm. They had some staffing vacancies. We have gone through the initial submittal process where we have to get the sign-off on all the various different agencies within the state. So we started that process to try to speed things along. It's hard to predict. We're certainly hoping that it's no more than a six-month kind of turnaround, which would include the bid as well as all the approvals. But we may be being optimistic.
Okay, I might just follow up on that and ask you to provide me some sort of details on the steps of the process?
Sure, sure. I can have Nema, who's been our kind of go-to person on dealing with Safe Routes and the permitting process, to kind of lay out all the various different steps. And then we can sort of check off down the way as we go.
That'd be perfect, thank you. And then my last question is back to the Carroll Avenue sidewalk, the bridge project. Just noting in passing, it was surprising to me just how much of the bridge they took away. And seeing the little that was left, wondering why that was not a complete bridge replacement project. Just a little left.
I think not having to go in the waterway is a very big piece of that.
I guess that must be right. Anyway, I guess the issue that I wonder about is one of the barriers to having a sidewalk that's accessible, potentially ADA accessible, depending on the width of the right-of-way, are the telephone poles. And is there clear legal information when you have a federal law requirement for accessibility? And then you have utility use of a right-of-way for power poles? If there is no way to make a sidewalk legally accessible as it's supposed to be, does that trump the power poles? In other words, they have to underground the power lines if there's no other way to meet the legal requirements of the ADA?
Well, I can tell you what State Highway's position has been with that regard. Say, for instance, at the intersection of Carroll and Philadelphia, across from the fire station, where we pushed very hard for them to relocate that utility pole. They told us it was not possible and they gave themselves a waiver. So when they run into a situation so far where it becomes either too expensive or technically difficult to provide, to meet the requirements of the accessibility rules, they provide a waiver and they've documented that they were unable to meet the requirements.
I would actually think that you could file a legal suit on that.
I was going to ask if we could, we had a meeting with Representative, Americans with Disabilities Act Board, a year, a little bit over a year ago. And I wonder, and he offered to help anytime.
Great.
And I wonder if we could write to him, if you could CC councilmembers on that, on that letter or email? And just say, you know, in regards to this issue, do you have any information that we might be able to follow up on? Thank you.
Sure.
Councilmember Seamus.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be very quick, but I just wanted to thank Ms. Braithwaite for reaching out to Riot On to resolve the need for a bus stop on or near Maple Avenue on the 12 Route. It's just as ridiculous that people would have to ride the bus all the way up to the Tacoma Station and then ride another bus back when they're driving right past, when the bus goes right past their homes. So thank you very much.
You're welcome. We have to give credit to Erkan Ozberg on that from the planning office. He picked right up on that and got it.
He worked hard on it, yeah.
Councilmember Schultz.
Do we have a clue with regard to the WSSC repaving in New Hampshire Gardens as to when? Because when I talked with Ian, a few days ago, he said, nobody knows when they're going to-
Yeah, they have not provided us with any schedule at this point. We've repeatedly asked. There is some issue going on between WSSC and the contractor with regard to verification of compaction densities within their trench. So they're currently in a bit of a battle. And once that gets resolved, then I think some of the other answers will be forthcoming.
So there's a possibility, I gather, that it might not happen until spring?
Yeah, I think there is a possibility it might be delayed.
The Glen Side Drive, it's coming up in the, in the design queue. When do you imagine you might be ready to call the first community meeting on that design?
Yeah, we, we hope to get started on that this, late this fall and winter. Typically, once we award a contract to one of our on-call engineering firms, they use, they do a survey work, which can take about four to five weeks to get their base maps put together. And then they can proceed with kind of doing an informational meeting, which sort of lays out some concept ideas.
So you think you'd like to get the survey work completed before you have that first community meeting? Well, I'm familiar with that process because of what we went through, what, in 2011, on that for a while, you know, other parts of the neighborhood. The last thing is, is I sent an email, I guess, 10 days ago or two weeks ago, with regard to Carroll Avenue near the intersection between Merrimack and University Boulevard. Because Erwin Mack and myself had met with Anisha Mukherjee, she's the deputy engineer for District Three, about several things, one of which was to complete the sidewalk between Merrimack and University. And you know the condition there. It's in the state highway right-of-way. But she writes back and says, oh, there's not enough room to put a sidewalk there. And besides, there's not enough evidence of crashes to justify it. I mean, the, the reasoning was really off-base, to put it charitably. I mean, there's plenty of room there to build a sidewalk. There's so much room there that SHA refuses to even bother to fill the potholes leading into the gas station. So I haven't gotten a response back from, from within, from, I guess, yourself or anybody else.
Yeah, Erkan has followed up with Dave Murnan of State Highway, basically sending the information that we got from Anisha and saying, we're not understanding this response, can you provide us some further information? So we're expecting to hear, get something back from him. He's responded and he's gotten our request. He's funneled it to some consultants and they'll be getting back in touch with us.
She's a very, Anisha, I met with her in her office back in February. Bright woman, very professional and all that. So he, Erwin and I were just completely floored by the wrongness of her response.
Everything we have indicates that the right-of-way extends well past the pavement into what would be considered the driveway of that gas station.
And there's a huge safety concern because Sligo Elementary School is going to be doubling its enrollment because of the closing of John Evans Andrews. And, and they're really concerned about pedestrian safety in that area. So I don't need to go on. You, you know the story because of what I wrote.
Yeah, we're following up.
Yeah, we're trying to follow up.
Okay, that's all I needed to know. Thank you.
Just one last statement that we are working- Just one last statement that we are working hard to make sure that we get information out on this, and we appreciate your help also sharing this information out with the residents.
Yeah, we will.
Terrific. Thank you so much. All right, we're gonna move on now to a discussion of legislative priorities.
Do you want, well, Councilmember Smith has to leave early, so the clock was to go ahead and go. We were, we were wondering if we should move things around, but.
Yeah, we were.
Guess not.
We're gonna plow through legislative priorities really fast.
Exactly. So.
But well.
But well. So, so one of the things we're, among the things we're hoping to hear from the council tonight are if you have other legislative priorities you want to put forward in addition to what you've already provided. And I'd like you to, if you can, talk a little bit about what you want from the relationship with the legislative advocate and how we can help make communication work better, and what, what your expectations are from them. And finally, the, think about the RFP for the Montgomery County lobbyist and what, what your thoughts are about the scope of services for that.
So three things.
Yeah.
What we wanna prioritize lobby, what we want our lobbyists in Annapolis to focus on, or the relationship.
And communication.
Communicate with us.
Yes.
And ideas for a potential lobbyist in Rockville. Would anyone like to kick us off? Councilmember Smith?
Okay, I'm gonna be quick. First, regarding the lobbyists in Annapolis, I would like more quote-unquote insider information. I mean, just giving us a recap on what we can read in the newspaper is not very helpful. I mean, we need to really understand where we can put pressure points and move our priorities for. Second, regarding our Rockville advocate, someone needs to be able to represent us with the executive and the county council, and those are two separate bodies, but they have to be able to get in the room with both of them and have some relationship with the county's lobbyists. And the third, I'm not gonna say anything right now. Tomorrow's the legislative committee meeting, so I'll get a better sense of what's possible for us. But there are not very many good proposals from other municipalities so far. We're the best, as usual.
Okay. If I, if I might, though, just, we did identify a couple things here that, that we want to, besides what was put forward through the legislative action requests, that the city may want to pursue, the state bond bills for library renovation, perhaps, I think, for an aquatic center at the hospital site, kind of in combination with a number of folks through the county, and then following up on the language that we've had inserted in the budget bill last year related to both economic development and utilities. And I think really trying to push those aspects. I'm not sure exactly what legislation would come out of that. It would be very interesting to see the reports that we get back.
Anyone else? Councilmember Mills?
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of ideas and responses. I won't necessarily put them in order. I think it would be really helpful to have our advocate in Annapolis prepare for us background information on the staff that work for our delegation. So some of them we know very well. We have good relationships, personal relationships with individual staff members, but we don't always know all the junior staff. We don't always know the subdivision of issues that those staff work on, and we don't necessarily know what those offices, what makes those offices tick. Associated with that, I really hope that we can push it a little bit harder to create, and knowing that our delegation is gonna change somewhat unpredictably in the next period of time, to create sort of strong expectations for each of our representatives that, and from my mind, it's basically that we want a bill out of each of them that passes.
Yes.
As sort of a very crude way to measure, and we want our advocate to be the partner with each of those offices to make sure that there is a, you know, Tacoma Park bill that passes. So the city manager just gave a great example of bond bill funding. That's, that could be one example, but, but whatever it is, that, you know, our expectation is that they are delivering for us on average, you know, something, something each session. We had some victories on, for example, the, the bills with regard to takeout wine sales, you know, a couple of years ago, sort of very small-scale bills. We should always have something like that that we're pursuing. And in particular, I would, I, I think that the, the county or the, the by-county, you know, bills that get sort of the early process between PG and Montgomery County, those seem to be targets that often move. If we can get that process done, if we can get the relationship with PG County managed correctly, then we can move things there. So I think of that as being a particularly important place in which to pursue, you know, specific targeted legislative initiatives. Strongly supportive of the idea of pool or aquatic center funding, and I guess I would ask, and it could be our advocate or it could be the city staff, but I think it's a great thing to involve our advocate in, would be facilitating a meeting very, very soon, well before session begins, to talk about, you know, what would it take from a, it's really more of a strategy meeting, to talk about what, what would it take to put together maybe a multi-year effort to get as much funding as possible from the state to make an aquatic center happen. So I think that's, that's a degree of facilitation and planning that the advocate could really help with, in knowing what the, what's, what's possible, what's the outside bound of what's possible. They're agreeing with Councilmember Smith on the, the kind of information we get back from the advocate in terms of what's going on in Annapolis, and wanting, you know, somewhat, somewhat more actionable information that, that really comes specifically from them. In terms of the county, I think initially what I want, without speaking of what should be in the RFP, knowing that partly it's constrained by funding, what I initially want is someone who's really, again, helping on the relationship side, figuring out staff and, and opportunity and how to strengthen the city's relationship with enough of the county council to make a difference on more issues. So, I mean, that's, that's, that's an initial idea. Is there any other question? What were the three questions? Priorities?
I think you did them.
Advocate. Okay, great. Great, thanks.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you for the information. As far as Annapolis goes, I do think the bond funding would be, would be great, including the library. One of the things I'm not clear on is whether we need to do anything more on the emergency room question. So.
I don't think so. We will be having, receiving the, some new regulations soon on the emergency, the freestanding room emergency departments. And actually, I think we came up pretty well on, on some of the promises we got. It's just holding people to them.
Okay. One of the things I saw both when I was there testifying and also that I've seen in Rockville is that there's a lot of successful efforts, or at least what looked like positive efforts by municipalities, where there are groups of constituents who also show up and advocate. Sometimes they're matching hats and chants and, and, you know, armbands and things like that. And I don't know that that part is necessary, but it really makes a difference as opposed to sitting there at the little table by yourself, which is my experience some of the time. And, you know, it didn't hurt my feelings, but I think it would be nicer to be able to have that in both Rockville and Annapolis. And so I think going forward, if there's a new group for Rockville, and if it is the existing people still for Annapolis, some sort of, you know, building off of what Councilmember Mail was talking about, some sort of strategy that talks about how we could use our residents for these things too, because I think that looks more like it's a real thing in some ways when you get there. It's not just, hey, I'm an elected official, I want this, but here are all these people who we represent who want it too, who took the trouble to get out there, because that's more significant when they do that. And the other piece in terms of the relationship question with Rockville, we could have a big turnover depending on what happens with this term limits thing. And so we've gotta find people who, you know, will be, will be well-connected even in an uncertain world, I guess I would say. And I'll stop there.
Councilmember Krasche?
I just wanna join Councilmember Mail, Smith, and Kovar. I think, first of all, with the state bond bill for library renovation, which is something I feel strongly about, and a potential recreation or pool facility, I think those are great ideas. I think, from the standpoint of, I'll still call myself a new council member, I think it's important to have more opportunities identified for this council to engage members of our county and state delegations. And that means not only in public forums where they happen to be hanging around, and not just by chance running into our county council or state delegation, but creating actual public environments where we can invite them when we have an item or on our agenda that's relevant to something we want them to pay attention to, and give them a formal invitation to attend our meeting so that residents can voice their concern. And to what Councilmember Kovar just said, our advocates should identify agenda items on county or at the state level, items that we need to gather support, where we as advocates for our community and with our community members can show up to express how we feel about certain things. I think it's really about developing those relationships at a very personal level with those people on the county or state delegation, aside from just running into them at community events where you don't have the ability to articulate your positions, and then creating those situations where you can have your supporters there with you to convey to them in real numbers about how a certain issue is important to us. So it's really creating those environments for us. I think it's helpful. Thanks.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I also consider myself to be a new council member.
[laughing]
And I'd just like to voice support for New Hampshire Avenue Economic Development. I think that should bubble up right to the top of our list. Thank you.
All right. I guess I'll close this out and just say I agree with what my colleague said. I think the priorities we have outlined here are the appropriate ones. In terms of our advocate in Annapolis, I think one of the things that worked really well this last session is when we were trying to get these questions inserted into the budget. For me personally, I was given a list of mayors in the jurisdictions of the people who, the delegates who were sitting on the committee, and so I think we should be doing more of that. And I think it goes to exactly what Councilmember Smith was saying, is like figuring out who is sitting on the appropriate committees and who are our colleagues either at, you know, the council level, the mayor level, or other counties, Prince George's or Montgomery, that we can bring in and help us. So more of that. I think in terms of Rockville, I agree with what my colleague said. And then also, I think a key part of this, which may go without saying, is also giving us a heads up on how, with things that are coming up. I feel like we're, we're playing a little bit of catch-up in terms of what's being put on the county agenda. It would be good to have somebody who understands our priorities and how things at the county level are gonna impact us. And I think that's it. Quickly, you didn't have your light on.
No, I know I didn't, so I'm.
Quickly.
I just want to say that I would, I appreciate the opportunity to be used by staff and our, my colleagues here to. Go places, talk to our delegation, to talk to county council members, to represent us in any way in terms of messages that we need or to ask questions. And just, just to, you know, to, to do that, over and above everything else that I do. I've always felt in all my years on the council that this was an area of, of, we could really greatly exploit, and staff, I would like staff to make more, more use of, of me. I'll just speak for myself. Thank you.
Okay.
We thank you.
Is that enough direction?
That's really helpful. Thank you very much.
Is that what you needed for tonight? All right, terrific. I know Councilmember Smith has a very early meeting in Annapolis, so I think, Councilmember, would you like to stay for the, want me to switch around the police discussion, or you, you wanna catch up on that later?
We can do, I'll stay for the police.
Okay, so let's just move and do the police item now, and we'll do the wrap-up on the update on Tacoma Junction after that.
Thank you, Mayor.
For the, for the police item, the cover sheet, actually, the whole sheet in the agenda packet, recaps the major points that were covered in a meeting that was held with some of our police staff, with Mayor Stewart, and Councilmembers Krasche and Siemens. And one of the things I think that, first of all, is it's useful for everyone to know these different topics and the kinds of things that we're either doing or that are in process. We are also moving forward to find the best ways to share this information with the public. And I think where we particularly need to focus is on sharing some information on our website that answers the questions that I hear often from residents about what are our training, what, you know, how do we do de-escalation? How do we, what kinds of things do we think about? And before I turn this over to the chief, I also said that one of the things that I think has been important as we look forward to improving and documenting police community relationships in Tacoma Park, is that, you know, we're looking at it from a multi-pronged process. In one, on one side of things, there is things like the community, unity in the community, the cookouts, the various kinds of, you know, national night out, ways to meet personally people and walk around the community and get to know each other. There's another side of it, which is very management dat- data-oriented, which is keeping track of things, holding people accountable to things, making sure that, that we can be really careful about how our officers react, how that's documented, so that if there's training that's needed, that we identify it. If somebody's doing really well, we can give kudos to that person. And so that's, those are some of the things. And then we also need some more information from the community, both in a survey form and, and in informal discussion kinds of ways. So Chief, would you wanna go over the various things that you have listed here, and then we can go into some more details?
And I'll, I'll just try to do it briefly, so if you have questions, you can ask more specific questions. The White House Police Data Initiative, which we're gonna be partnering with White House on, will be one of the few smaller agencies that do it. One that they're gonna be a little bit bored with the amount of data that we can give them, because we just don't have that many uses of force. And, but you can see some of the data that's there. Some of it we're already providing. You know, the crime data, now we, we actually are putting that live through the county open data portal, and we will be linking that to our webpage. So that's already being done. We're still working on some of the technical glitches to get the traffic stop data out that we have, but we can't get back as, as easily as we'd like from the state and get it posted in real time. We are working on, on doing that as well. Internal affairs and use of force, we do a quarterly report now. We're gonna try and, and make that a little bit more timely. We're purchasing some new software that adds on to our IA Pro software that will allow us to do real-time entry for use of force, internal investigations, complaints, compliments as well.
Could you explain just a moment what IA Pro does?
Yeah, the IA Pro is probably one of the most generally-used internal affairs tracking programs. It's a case management program, but it also, we use it to track departmental collisions, use of force. We will be starting to do it for compliments as well, and, and complimentary letters and kudos from the public. But it allows, it also has an early warning system built in. We've been using the early warning system since before I got here. However, the state has now mandated police departments to start using an early warning system. So it, we were already ahead of the curve on that.
What's an early warning system?
So, an early warning system is if an officer has so many complaints or so many uses of force or so many accidents, it will flag the officer. And it doesn't mean necessarily that the officer wasn't justified in any of those uses of force or the, or the collision was their fault, but it, it gives the supervisor and the, the command staff an opportunity to look at it. Okay, do we have a problem here? Do we have something that needs training? Do we have a, we can also look at trends throughout the department, not just individual officers, if there's a problem with, you know, people backing up and hitting. If there's a problem with, you know, people backing up and hitting things all the time, then that's something that we can look at, is do we need to have more training? Is it an equipment issue? And likewise, you know, with use of force, if we start seeing a pattern of force or a pattern of complaints across the board, not just with one particular officer, is it a training issue? Is it something they need some constitutional law training? Is it something they need to go back and do some defensive tactics training? You know, those are the things that it alerts us to, so we can be proactive before it becomes a major issue. So, but we still use paper today to get everything into it. And one of the things we'll be able to do is, with the new software add-on, is that when we have a use of force, when we have a complaint, it'll go right into the system and it's going to be almost real-time. You know, I'll be able to come in the next morning and see the complaints or the compliments or whatever happened. So it's going to speed up the process that administratively sometimes takes weeks now with the paper process. You know, the webpage links, well, again, I was talking about Open Data Montgomery. We're going to link to that. We also have implemented raids online. It's similar to crime reports, but it's actually verified incidents, not just the dispatch data. Dispatch data is not always accurate because you get dispatched for one thing and it turns out to be something else. It doesn't always change in crime reports. Raids online will give you real-time, near-real-time public data of what's going on in the city. You can set it up similar to crime reports where you can get alerts for your neighborhood or within a block. But it also has some analytical stuff on the public side where you can actually do your own analysis. And it's, and we're going to go back to when we first started doing electronic reporting a couple of years ago and we'll be back, that data is actually already there because the county's using it. So the other thing, the other side of the raids is attack raids. Right now, our software, LexisNexis has a software package for crime analysis called Attack. Attack raids is the next step. It's got a predictive element to it. So we're actually going from intelligence-led to also intelligence and predictive policing.
Chief, what does raids stand for? Is that an abbreviation or?
I have no idea.
The terrible acronym. So now it's the police stuff. It's just, the company's picked just terrible acronyms.
Yeah, I mean Bear Analytics was the company that LexisNexis bought out. Bear Analytics was doing, was one of the first companies to do the predictive policing. The nice thing about this is that we're linked to many of the surrounding jurisdictions because they're using attack raids as well for their crime analysis. So the data now is a much, if you remember a couple of years ago, I said, you know, we don't have a large dataset to do some of this stuff. Now we have the dataset for the surrounding jurisdictions in Montgomery County and DC. So we get a better idea of what's going on around us, so we, it adds to our ability to accurately predict where crime's going to occur. And we can target individuals more than we can target, you know, just generally flooding an area. Now we can actually, we have offender data that's rolled into that as well. Just to give you an idea, entry-level training is now up to 29 weeks. So it's, you know, you're talking about seven months and then there's another 14-week field training program. Both, and then we are also in in-service training. One of the things we're doing this year, there's a mental health first aid course that was sponsored by the state. There was some grant money available. Montgomery County had the grant. And we're going to be training everybody up in the seven-hour. Now, we do have officers that have already been through the 40-hour CIT training as well. CIT crisis intervention training gets a little bit more into the meat and potatoes of dealing with people with mental disabilities, addictions, you know, whether it's alcohol or drugs, and also developmental disabilities. You know, the goal is to keep them out of the criminal justice system. And the goal is also for us not to get repeat calls at that same location and have to constantly go back and actually to solve some of those problems and point them in the right directions. You know, there was a little mention of de-escalation and tactical disengagement. We've really only, we've always taught that. Traditionally, you know, the last thing we want to do is have to use force or, you know, God forbid we get in an officer-involved shooting. I mean, that is the nightmare for most cops. So what we do is we do teach, you know, disengagement. We do teach the officers how to tactically withdraw and wait for additional units and, you know, try to get the situation de-escalated. Doesn't always work that way because it is dependent on the other person complying to some degree in their actions. We are doing some review of constitutional law. We did institute, and I think it's very important, it's something I've wanted to do since I got here, is institute the peer support team, which provides some mental health counseling, but more trauma care for fellow officers. Because we are a small agency, we partnered with Montgomery County. We are part of the Montgomery County Police Peer Support Team, which is a multi-agency unit. Whether it's a line-of-duty death, officer-involved shooting, or, you know, a tragedy where children are, you know, officers are involved where children die, that usually causes some severe trauma that will pop up later in their life. It really is active intervention when these things occur so that we don't get PTSD. We don't get officers having addiction problems or alcohol problems down the road. We talked about branding, you know, we have changed the police car design and we are going to continue to back, to retrofit some of the cars that are not going to be deadline right away. We just have to get around to that. All the officers can be issued business cards with their name on it. We have generic ones. They don't always, you know, I think it's a lot more professional and it's not a huge expense when officers are involved. Whether it's a traffic stop, if they're not going to write a warning, and if they're not going to write a ticket, then they should be giving out their business card. And it more readily makes the officer open to the public and they know who they talk to. National Night Out, I can't say enough about this year's National Night Out. I've been doing National Night Outs, you know, in many places throughout the county over the last 25 years. And this was probably by far the best I've ever been to. I thought, I thought it was really a really well-done event. I think everybody had a good time. There is blackmail video available for the mayor in a potato sack. And it is on my Facebook page. But I thought that was really good. Unity in the community is, and I don't want people to think that this is just something we've started. This is something that's ongoing. It's just one more way of formalizing it. You know, the city manager talked about our cookouts that we did earlier last year and the year before that were really, very good successes. But, you know, it was the police department going into the neighborhood, trying to get that outreach. But we didn't always have the cooperation of everybody in the neighborhood. I think this is really, you know, a partnership that I think has a lot of potential. And I think that's where it's a little bit more unique. It's not just us going and saying, hey, let's do a basketball game or let's do a cookout. And because when you can put the face with the officer and a name and there's a personal relationship, there's a little bit more understanding. The summer job program, internships, I know Captain Collington was very involved in the summer job program. I think he got a couple of people jobs to go up, I think, three, three people. We have, we've been involved with the Families Services Division of Montgomery County Police for the last two or three years now with the diversion program. What that entails is if we arrest somebody, usually a first-time non-violent offender, juvenile, for a, you know, a minor crime, they are given an opportunity for diversion rather than going through the justice system. The reality of the juvenile justice system, and there's no other way of putting it, is it doesn't work anyway. Because a first-time juvenile offender for a minor offense generally doesn't get much, other than a written reprimand. And we know how well those work for a kid that, you know, you know, is stealing stuff out of cars. But what we found was when they go through the diversion program, it's a contract they sign, there's an 80% success rate that they will not commit another crime. And that alone is enough to make it a worthwhile project. Lunch with a cop, of course, school started, just spun up, and so we're going to be doing that if the officers can tolerate the school food. And then, again, I talked about the intelligence-led policing. What we're finding, I mean Kathy Lanier, you know, it's great to be somebody that's on your way out and you can say whatever you want. And I wish her well on her new assignment. I think they're going to miss her. But Kathy Lanier said it, you know, we have these repeat offenders, and these are violent repeat offenders, that are constantly committing crimes and nothing happens to them. I was talking to the chief from Prince George's County yesterday over some coffee. And one of the things, they had a violent armed robber. He got 20 years, all but one day suspended. You know, the people that we arrest with ankle bracelets that are committing crimes continuously while they're on ankle bracelet monitoring, it just staggers, staggers the mind. In fact, if we all remember the, in the recent news, the ice cream vendor that was shot in Prince George's County, one of those individuals was the individual that was charged with one of our carjackings at Elm several years ago. And arrested for another armed robbery subsequent to that Elm robbery. And he committed the, well, he wasn't the shooter, but he was with the shooter at that robbery in Prince George's County. So we really, we have tried to really focus now on repeat offenders. Through that, we have an agreement with Veritrax that we are in the process. That's the GPS vendor that District of Columbia uses. We're going to have our detectives and our crime analysts trained up on it and certified to use it so that we can match crimes with offender data tracking real-time. So there are a lot of things that we're doing behind the scenes. You know, there are things that the officers do on their own that I don't think that the public is aware of. We had some ice cream deliveries by officers this summer. We had officers going out and buying the icy pops so that when they got home, they were all wired on sugar for their parents. But we also had, at National Night Out, some of those bicycles that were donated. And I just want to give credit to the officers that went out and they didn't like the bicycles that we were going to provide that, you know, we tried to refurbish a little bit, the ones that we impound. They went out and bought brand-new bikes for the kids. So that's the kind of outreach that the officers really do on a daily basis, and we just want to highlight that. And we're not good at blowing our own horn. And the reality is that police departments, when the police officer shows up, it's usually not because you're having your best day. And we don't always do things that people want us to do because we have to and they don't always want to go with us. But the reality is there's a lot of contact, most of the contact that goes on every day that doesn't get the highlights in the newspaper articles. Those are the ones that we really want to highlight and stress. And that brings me into some of the things that I think the consultant can really provide. The community survey that we do every three years really makes a difference to me as a manager to see where we stand in how we're performing, how the community feels about us. So one of the things that, obviously, that's been delayed for a year. One of the things that we're looking for from the consultant is to be more specifically focused on the police department with a community survey, whether, you know, whatever form that takes, whether it's just a survey plus, you know, interviews, you know, in forms with the community and the police department. However, that winds up working out down the road. And also an internal survey. You know, as a smaller agency, we have to keep our people engaged and we have to keep them interested and we want to keep them long-term. So how do we get that satisfaction from the employees? How do we keep them happy so that when they go to work, they're not grumpy when they go out on the road? And that's just a reality. You know, we're not robo-cops. They're people. And like any other employee in any other job, whether it's McDonald's or the police department, you want to keep your employees happy so that they can do their job and feel good about it. And redefining performance. It's very easy for us to measure performance based on how many tickets somebody writes, how many traffic stops they make, how many reports they write. You know, we want to look at, okay, but, and it's very hard to say, okay, how many crimes did you prevent today? So what we want to do is we also want to reward the officers. Since we do have pay-for-performance, and I can never say that for some reason, how do we quantify some of the things that they do that are outreach to the public? How do you quantify things like going to school visits and having school lunches and count that into their evaluation as well? And so we want to refocus the employee evaluations for the police officers to include the traditional things, but also to include, I don't want to say non-traditional, but they're not counted traditionally. It is something that matters. It is something we put in their evaluations now, but it's something that really is hard to quantify. So we want to do a better job of that. I have never found a police department yet that has had a perfect rating system or a performance evaluation system. And I doubt that any, any agency, whether it's police department or not, is happy with what they have. They always want to make it better. Sometimes we're too close to it to figure out how to do that. And that's one of the things we're looking at from the consultant to help us with. Something we've been wanting to do really for three or four years. And it's just, we're moving slowly, but we'd like somebody from the outside to maybe take a look at that.
As I said, a lot of what we do is very good and we'd like to share that. We also want to build ways to find out more information about what we can do better. And if you've got some questions, you can do it now or later. But this is going to be an initiative that's going to go for a number of months. And I'm excited about it. I just wish it would move. Your help on this is very much appreciated.
And do you see that now we would reissue another RFP?
I would like to continue, I would like to continue to focus a little bit on, to make sure that what we're asking for is what the council wants to see. And I think we just have to be very specific on a couple of things for issuing something out.
And the only other thing I would add that has come up in our conversations on unity in the community is that Loric Charcutian, who has, is a media, a professional mediator and has done work in Baltimore with the police department there, has offered to pro bono hold some dialogues here. So as like sort of the next step after the kickoff block party. And that could also be something that, you know, she's not going to do a lot pro bono, but it may also be something else we add to this and think about depending on how conversations go with her and if it fits our needs. Any questions or comments on this? And just another, just a thing before I forget it. I had a meeting last week with Principal Johnson at Blair High School. And technically, we know that the high school is in Silver Spring in Montgomery County, not in Tacoma Park. But she is completely open to the idea of our police officers going there and if it's not, you know, taking away from Montgomery County's Explorer Program. She said there is, there's a lot of young people at Blair who do the county's Explorer Program. And I know we've had some, you know, difficulties getting ours reinvigorated.
Yes.
But, is that a good word? But she's also happy to have representatives from our police department at the school and working to try and get some of the Tacoma Park students maybe interested in that.
And we're not opposed to somebody that lives just slightly outside the city as well. You know, and I would, I would ask everybody up on the panel to also put out the word on the list serves that we are looking for explorers and we do want to spin that program up.
Great. All right. We're good at this time. All right, our last item up is an update on the Tacoma Junction redevelopment. I think I'm turning it over to the deputy city manager.
First, I wanted to answer Mr. Kovar's question. I found out what ATAC raids stands for. The ATAC is Automated Tactical Analysis of Crime. And raids is the Regional Analysis and Information Data Sharing. Terrible acronym.
Don't forget that.
And I'll make the update on the Tacoma Junction development agreement process brief. Since you all met as an elected body in July, the agreement was officially executed and became effective on August 1st. Pursuant to the final development agreement, we expected two deliverables by the end of August from NDC, both of which we received. One is a project schedule that they submitted for our review and we're currently reviewing it with staff. And with our development attorney, there were no red flags raised. And with our development attorney, there were no red flags raised. Detailed, and very, very fine details, actually, the project from inception to the completion of construction. We're expecting an LOI to be submitted to the city by the end of November. The TJCC PAC, the Tacoma Junction Community Consultation Process Advisory Committee, will have their work wrapped up about the same time, around early December. Construction, according to the project schedule they submitted, is scheduled to start sometime in late 2018 and hopefully be finished in early to mid 2020. Once we have worked through some of the minutia of getting the project schedule in a format that's ready to present, we'll make sure that that is available on the website, which is currently up to date. They, NDC also provided, pursuant to the development agreement, their first in a series of regular updates about the negotiations they're having with the co-op to further, well, their negotiations towards the letter of intent. They've had two meetings to date. I've attended as an observer, both of them. Mayor Stewart was at the first one. The first one was primarily an organizational meeting to lay out expectations and discuss what they would be meeting about and to start laying the framework for a schedule of meetings. The second was primarily focused on turning radio on the site, and since that meeting, NDC has provided some preliminary designs based on the discussions, and we are right now awaiting the scheduling of a follow-up meeting to discuss those designs that NDC forwarded to the co-op and also to discuss some of the other outstanding issues like parking and continuity of operations. Also, in the last month, the Tacoma Junction Community Consultation Process Advisory Committee.
TJ Group.
The TJCC PAC, which Mayor Stewart says they're going to be coming up with a new name at their next meeting. Held an organizational meeting on July 22nd as well, and the purpose of that meeting was to discuss and ensure that everyone knew exactly what the charge was of the committee and to start laying the framework for future meetings. They'll be meeting again on September 12th, I believe, and have another meeting scheduled after that. Materials for all of those meetings are available through the project directory in the Tacoma Junction redevelopment site, and agendas for upcoming meetings will be posted as soon in advance of meetings as they're available, and the minutes will be posted shortly after the meetings. The minutes are drafted by staff and circulated amongst the committee members and NDC for approval before they're posted. And I'm, coming up next, in addition to the continued meetings between NDC and the co-op and the TJCC PAC, we'll be approving the project schedule after a few minor refinements, and NDC is going to continue their physical inspection of the property. I understand they'll be doing some soil borings this week. Okay, geotechnical borings this week. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions about what's been going on in August, and Ms. Grigsby can certainly speak to anything related to the advisory committee.
Do you even have any questions or comments? Councilor Mel?
Could you just remind me how many days we have left for the LOI process to play out?
We're hoping that we have it by the end of November, so there's about fewer than 90 days. And one of the things that Mayor Stewart and I have discussed with both, with each other and with both NDC and the co-op, is our interest in remaining, you know, hands-off, neutral observers, but occasionally, we may be checking in with them to make sure that meetings are being scheduled and things are progressing because they do have a lot to do in a relatively short period of time.
Good.
Councilor, call back.
I'm not sure if I heard it, but does the council have to approve the project schedule and by a certain time, or neither of those things true?
The project schedule can be approved administratively, and we have, I believe it's 30 days to review and approve it. Again, it's, there are no red flags, and it's something that we can provide to you if you, if you'd like to see it before.
Is the final date kind of the same as it was before?
The final date for the project being completely filled out, yes.
Okay.
All right, looks like it's it for tonight, before 10:30. Good. Don't forget, Monday night, we're going to be back here talking about the elections. Sunday, Folk at the Gazebo. I think that's it, yeah. And then Wednesday, back here Wednesday. Thank you. We're adjourned.